I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, and excuse the yelling here because we are trying to maintain our social distances. Council activity reports, I am not going to give a report in the interest of brevity.
I don't think I had anything.
Okay, Councilmember Hertzberg?
Oh, we had a little meeting this noon, I guess.
Yeah.
Other than the meeting at noon, I have nothing.
Nothing, Councilmember, you go.
Liquor board policies and procedures and special counsel.
Oh, yeah, we did have a policies.
Okay, all right.
Of course we did.
All right, we do have a couple of department head reports. First one is from the liquor store, Mr. Lud.
Sure, that's fine. In your council packet, you already have our numbers year-to-date.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not going to go over those much because they've all changed after the last week. Last week, we had sales of $58,000. So, we're up 17 percent. Our profits are 15.8 percent. So, we own almost 3,800 customers last week alone. So, it has been very busy. We are open normal hours. There are a lot of rumors out there that we are going to close, but our association has been working with the governor, and we will know firsthand before if the governor decides to shut the liquor stores down. There's been no conversation of that at this point in time. And people can follow us on Facebook, would be great, or call the store if they hear rumors. We have it right in our answering machine, and we update that as we see needed. So, again, normal hours right now. That could change depending on the pandemic. So, we monitor it every day and keep our customers safe and our staff. Wine club will be on hold for now. Also, the training on the new system is still ongoing. They're going to upgrade some new things this week for our staff to use. Since our last visit, I've been to the Capitol twice, one day for fetal alcohol syndrome, the other day for Capitol issues with liquor. I don't know how far those will get this year. So, there is a push by the grocers, but I think we might be okay this year. And I was supposed to be off the Board of Directors for MMBA, but that got canceled till October, so I've got a couple more months to go on that yet. So, that's all I have.
Any traffic count? You're handling that fine. It's not, they're not lined up in the, out the door?
Yeah, we can watch it hourly. The busiest hour we had last week was between, between 1:00 and 2:00 before the governor talked when they thought they were shutting the state down. We had 55 customers, but that's over a period of an hour. So, very, very seldom. I don't think we ever had more than 10 people, including my staff, in there. At that time, we had two. So, it's been pretty consistent. So, and it's slowing down in the evenings earlier as people are staying home. And Sundays are still like normal. So, Neil?
Bill, if you were ordered to close down, could you still do deliveries and curbside pickup?
Curbside pickup is a no. We'd have to change some things, and same with deliveries. We'd have to come to you guys first for that.
But it could possibly be an option.
That is an option. Edina tried doing it. Hutch started doing it. I haven't heard how Candace is doing with it, but Edina was so backlogged that they couldn't keep up. So, they had to stop taking new orders. So...
I'm looking for a job.
Right now, we're keeping up. So, that's all I have.
Okay. And are you sticking around for item N under new business when we talk about the, we're going to talk a little more about the...
Yes.
You know, the...
Yep.
...in that. So, okay. Any other questions for Bill? I'm sure others will come up later on, but that's the report. Okay, you, then Andy.
All right. I guess briefly, we had 21 calls a month of January and February. Kind of listed out there in the page. Things that have changed a little bit. We had three firefighters that were supposed to finish up their firefighter one and two. Their house burn was supposed to be on the 21st. That has been postponed to a later date, unknown at this time. We did hire Jessica Stransky. She did receive her keys and pagers on the 2nd. So, in addition to that, some of the trainings we've done, we've done rope rescue, side-by-side training. We walked the AMPI. We did our bloodborne pathogens and hazmat. And really, that's kind of where we're at at this point. The, in addition to that, we are not having meetings until we are approved to. If we do an officers' meeting, it's going to be set up like this where we're going to be sitter-up, scattered around the table, or around the room. So, assuming that we'll be able to do that, and that'll be able to continue that way. But otherwise, everything's kind of on hold at this point, other than responding to calls. The one thing we have changed with our response is we'll send in one or two people with PPE on instead of the five people that typically will go in for a medical until extra people are needed. So, that's one of the biggest changes that we've made as a department. Otherwise, pretty much operations as normal.
Yeah, meetings, does that include your trainings too, those nights, or your...
Yep. Right now, our trainings have been postponed. I talked to Shane about it last week. I'm assuming, unless he can come up with a way that we can do trainings online, which is a possibility, but he would have to revamp some of his ideas or what we're working on. So...
Have you been in contact with other departments to see how they're handling...
Not directly. We have a group that I follow on Facebook, and they've done the same thing. They've been basically, the question's been asked, hey, we're no longer having meetings, or telling other departments, you need to stop having your meetings and stop having your trainings. So, I did receive an email from the state, basically acknowledging that, acknowledging that some departments have not stopped their trainings, and they need to stop now.
Okay.
So, that was just general email sent out to all of us.
All right, any other questions? Okay, if not, we have the consent agenda before us, which are the minutes from those meetings on listed or detailed on page one. There's a whole bunch of them there. And also, the next thing would be the vouchers on page two totaling $412,482.17. Request to send Mr. Mergan to the MRW Water Operation and Maintenance Training Session on April 15th. And that would be assuming that that is...
If they have it.
If they have it. And then another one here for Emergency Services Director, Mr. Fred, to attend those, one of those meetings there. Those are, first three of them there, and one is going to be here April, July, and October. Those are free, no, just be staff and mileage time. And then the resignation of Bob Wander from the fire department, accepting his resignation. That's the consent agenda. And just note that we're going to move things around. I'm going to move things around on the agenda here to hopefully keep the number of people in here down to a minimum. So...
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second. Motion, Mary Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve the consent agenda discussion. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none? All right. First four items under new business here. Item A has been polled. So, they're all fire department-related. So, the first one is the city contribution, our annual contribution to the Relief Association, and Mr. Melhop is here to request that.
Annual, the city does contribute $5,000. We're just going to ask for that again this year.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual contribution of $5,000 of the Panzol Fire Department Relief Association.
Second.
Motion, Matt Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the annual contribution of $5,000 to the Panzol Fire Department Relief Association. Discussion?
This is the amount that we budgeted, correct?
Okay, anything else? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And the next one is the purchase of a Ridgemount washer, and Chief Sonny will give a report on that, too.
At this time, we're looking for the city council's approval to purchase the BDS laundry washer. The total cost is $9,923. We do have an Alex Air quote as well. It is about $4,000 less, $3,500, I believe, if you compare apples to apples. But we would like to do the BDS basically based on quality, and we can wash three sets at one time instead of the one set through the Alex Air. And it's been recommended by other departments in our area that have them. So... And that money would be coming from the Relief Association and then donated to Panzol, City of Panzol.
What are you guys going to do with your, is that, are you going to do the washer you have now?
I don't think we've made a decision on what we're doing with that, but I, we were talking about it. I don't know if we ever donated that to the city when we purchased it. We'd have to find out where that's at.
I don't know how you...
I believe the city bought that one.
Was it? That's what I'm at, I...
Yeah, I'm almost certain the city paid for that one out of the budget. I have that conversation with Ron Mergan. We have to have use for that in the fireworks department if we can make that flip-flop.
Do your own laundry.
Sometimes, get some money in your pocket.
Because I know when you donate it or you buy it, there's certain things you can and can't do.
Right, and I'm pretty certain that the city bought that one out of the city budget.
And these are the new extractors.
This is the extractor, yep. Yeah, we've applied for grants twice on this, I believe, and been denied both times, trying to get one. And it's highly recommended that we purchase one, and should have had one probably within the last three years.
The thing that's spawning this is the fact that firefighter cancer is skyrocketing. It's astonishing the numbers, and it's just absolutely horrifying, the numbers of cancer that firefighters are getting.
And the price is down, right?
What's that?
Didn't the price go down from the last time we looked? Went to like 15,000 or something?
I believe it has, the first time we looked at it a few years back.
It's time to do this. There's absolutely no reason to...
I'll make a motion to purchase a Ridgemount washer from BDS Laundry, the amount of $9,923.
Second. Motion, Matt Gilmore, seconded by LeBeau, to purchase a Ridgemount washer from BDS Laundry, the amount of $9,923. Discussion?
Yeah.
Since they are, oh, go ahead.
Andy, I visited my brother-in-law at Water Fire Department. They did secure a grant for the full amount of theirs.
We've tried twice and been denied. We actually just had one denied, what, about two months ago? I think it was the last time we tried, and that's when we tried, we just threw the line in the sand.
Why would they be able to and we're not?
Why do other departments have two or three grants they've received over the last five or six years, and we can't? I don't know.
It's not that we're against getting the grant, but it's the feeling in the department that we just can't wait to get it.
Right.
Okay, and since the equipment is fairly different, there should not be an issue with the difference in the quote price or bid price here, correct?
It is distinctly different, yes.
Yes. Okay, anything else? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none?
Thank you.
Okay, and then the adding a second lieutenant position, chief. This has gone through the policies and procedures. They are recommending... Anything you want to add?
Not really. I guess I just, we've talked about it for several years about adding this additional position. It's always been there as an option. We've currently taken two of the officers' positions that were treasurer and our secretary, our finance officer and our secretary, and we've made them more of a clerical-type position instead of an officer's position a few years back. So, at this point, I just kind of wanted to add an additional officer, and I believe the policies and procedures came up with the idea of making it under a 10-year position. So, I support that.
Minimal effect on your budget there.
Yeah.
I'll move to add a second lieutenant position to the Panzol Fire Department.
Second.
Motion, Mary Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to add a second lieutenant position to the Panzol Fire Department. Discussion?
As I can say, thank you, Andy, for doing that, because we tried for 10, 12 years.
It's been a long time, it hasn't been...
Yeah, so, very good.
Thank you.
All your hard work on the policies and procedures has paid off. It was a good recommendation, obviously. Hey, all favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. And then the last one there is your amending, you wish to amend your constitution to, in regards to filling a vacancy in an officer's position. Again, this has gone through policies and procedures. There's the summary listed on page 16.
I just had a question about, do we need to add or want to add the wellness policy in there as an appendix to your constitution?
Yes, we never thought of that.
They could be added or subtracted any time. It would be very easy to add that.
Do you, do we want to do that before we approve it?
Or... It would have to be approved again if we added it, correct?
I suppose.
At a later date?
Or could we just make a motion to approve it with the addition of that?
What are you adding?
Hmm?
What are you adding?
The wellness, the fire department wellness policy as an appendix.
Oh, um... I'd have to, let me see, it should say in here how the changes are made in your constitution. It should go through there first. Because technically, you would have to adopt it, I believe.
Well, ultimately, whoever the fire department decides has to be approved by city council anyways.
Right. Just quickly looking through here to see about any additions or changes.
Well, I mean, Article 7 talks about, these policies have been adopted by the city council.
Yeah.
No approval from...
Oh, it says no approval from the department members is needed for such amendments.
Bill?
I would say if you want to approve the policy as it is before you tonight, and then get another appendix into an agenda packet in the future and approve the addition of that...
Okay.
...to the constitution, that seems to me, I mean, you maybe all know how that would look as an appendix. I don't, but maybe you do, and if you're comfortable approving it without having it before you. But I think the more obvious way would be to get it in an agenda packet, have it in front of you, and approve the addition of that to the constitution.
Okay.
Then I'll make the motion to approve the Panzol Fire Department's amended constitution.
I'll second that.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the Panzol Fire Department's amended constitution. Discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none? All right, thank you. Okay, next item is the deals with the liquor store, credit card processing company, and Bill again. And I've known what, I know what you're going through. It's our business. When I was there, we went through this several times, too. Every time something changes with ownership or whatever, issues.
As you can see in the council packet, we've had a lot of issues the last 18 months. We've, as an association, we've reached out to several people. Blinn and I interviewed this company because Wright Software, who we currently use, is teaming up with this company, and the reason they're supporting one company is if something happens, they can handle the issue instead of handling 10 different companies. So, when Blinn and I interviewed the lady, we went through, it would save us substantially per year. It's not an annual contract, I don't believe. Is it, Belinda?
I've not seen anything on a contract with this, and I believe originally, we did have a contract with Hartland, but I think that's expired a while back, because we actually had an argument with him, and he gave us $250 for a pain in agony with them, and said at that time that he would give us more if we signed a contract, tiny bit more. So, we did not sign a contract knowing that this was potentially in the works.
The, there is zero cost for the new software. That would be guaranteed by Wright as long as we have a contract with Wright. And we've been with them 11 years, since I've been here, 12 years. We've been with Wright. And we would change over the system when we go with the new system. They're about three weeks out on their new set of card readers. If there is any cost, it would be for the card reader holders, but I think we have the current ones that will work. So... And there might be some money coming back on the old card readers. No guarantee on that, though. So, we'd like to make that change when we switch.
I move to switch the liquor store credit card provider to direct acceptance group.
Second. Motion, Mary Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg, to switch the liquor store credit card provider to direct acceptance group. Discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none? All right. Then, the next item is a working session, and you're supposed to check our calendars. And I would suggest that we move this down to the end of the agenda. If we start talking about the administrator position, we're going to do that tonight, so that might come into, into play there. So, we will hold off on that one. And so, remind me if I forget there, Belinda or Jennifer. Okay, the next one is in regards to the Town and Country Days. Should that be held in June, which everything kind of is up in the air now, but it's a question of whether or not we want to participate in the Town and Country Days Parade.
I'll make a motion to participate in the 2020 Town and Country Day Parade.
Second.
Motion, Matt Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie, to participate in the 2020 Town and Country Days Parade. Discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried. All right. Solar farms. Now, this one here, I know Jennifer has been spending a lot of time on. She's been getting some calls in regards to the potential of a solar farm being placed somewhere on the Fertchi position, or the property, I should say. Question is whether or not we want to continue to have discussions on that or potentially put a moratorium on place until we can determine this. The location has not been determined yet as to where they want to put that. It could be anywhere on that. Question as to whether or not it fits into our comprehensive plan. Anything else, Jennifer, or Belinda, or Bill?
Well, they, I mean, they did give a location on page 39. I mean, that seemed like one of the less desirable locations on that property to have it from the state.
But I think their wording was any place on the original.
So, how do they give us, they gave us that picture. I actually was able to visit with her, and it happened to be a day that Jeff was in, and I thanked her for her patience in this, because this is our second call on the Fertchi property and somebody wanting a solar farm up there. Nobody could ever really give me an actual site or location. They just want anywhere between 8 and 12 acres. So, when I actually asked her to lay out where they wanted it, you'll see that on page 39, I thought that was probably the least, most desirable spot to put a solar farm. That, in our future land use map, that is depicted to be commercial. Of course, on the east side of Lake Avenue is depicted to be industrial. Both Bill and I, and Brad, and Ron have all talked about this, and, you know, when you're talking about, you know, eight, 10, 12-acre solar or wind farm, we're thinking more of industrial than we are commercial. And I also don't think that we want this right along a brand-new road that we've aesthetically put as, you know, an aggregate intersection. We've done some aesthetics up there on Lake Avenue just to put a solar farm or a wind farm, for that matter. But maybe it's a different piece of the Fertchi property that's maybe less desirable, not right out in front. But then we also have to worry about on both sides, a shoreline over the Lake District, and that falls along the river. So, you know, we were talking about how can we maybe put a hull to it for a short time. Moratoriums are good for a year. They can have an 18-month extension after that. But to put ordinance in place, get them drafted for more of these commercial or industrial-type solar or wind energy farms. Right now, our solar and wind energy ordinance really is for private, for, I believe, commercial or industrial rooftops and residential panels that you maybe have in your backyard just to produce enough energy for your stuff. It doesn't really depict or help us with these large apartments.
Well, I definitely agree about putting a moratorium on it, because the Fertchi property could be, we put so much money in that to utilize it for another industrial park or something like that. If we did put a moratorium on it, that stops all your phone calls.
For the time being, yes, it would be a good ordinance that would put it in a certain place in our community if we want to allow them, and then put the regulations on it. We want size, you know, screening, fencing, certain locations, certain zones. I just think that ordinance that we have is maybe a little bit too vague to be able to regulate these size of farms. We, when I thanked her for her patience, she said, you're not the only community that had to wrap their arms around this. They're kind of like the wind energy farms a few years ago. It seems like everybody wants to get one, have one, be a part of one, and now they're just popping up everywhere. So, I did ask her, is Fertchi on board with this, and she said, yes, he is interested in having one somewhere on that property.
Do we have any idea what this would bring us in return? Property tax and...
I do not know what the taxable value of land on a solar farm is. We're going to find out shortly, because the city just put a chunk of land in the solar farm, but I do not know.
Because I think that should weigh into our decision-making.
It can't be...
Hardly given us anything. And I agree, that corner right there would probably be better suited for something else, but maybe the far corner on the other end or...
And I'm sure they're going to, they want to put it where it's the, you know, easiest access, and that is going to be right along Lake Avenue, that has the least amount of trees, the least row of, you know, wetland, and it's probably the flattest.
But, right across the street from the substation, that's probably a...
Yes, probably.
But I think the thing that I would just say is that if you decide you want to do a moratorium, that it is important that you then, as part of that, direct the planning commission to begin making a study and to begin to formulate a plan for where, if anywhere, we would allow these and to define those areas, which I think, I, well, I mean, I'm not, I don't have a map well in mind of the whole city, but I don't think there's many other places that are within the city limits that would be big enough other than the Fertchi property somewhere. There might be one or two others, but there's not a lot. So, but I think that part of, part of doing the moratorium is to direct the planning to start studying it and come up with some recommendation.
And a moratorium can be lifted at any point in time, too.
Correct, yep.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 10, third series interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on commercial solar and wind energy systems and directing the planning committee to look into this issue.
I'll second that.
Motion, Mary Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to approve ordinance number 10, third series interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on commercial solar and wind energy systems and directing the planning commission to look into the issue of solar and wind energy systems within the city.
Be invited.
Okay, discussion?
I guess I'd still like my question researched.
I have it on here to check on the tax, property tax implications.
I know there is some, because those agreements always provide that, to the extent there's an increase in property value, the company, if they're just doing a rental or lease agreement, they'll pay the increase. a rental or lease agreement, they'll pay the increased taxes. So they must be anticipating there will be some. I don't know how big, but...
Well, it seems like the township loves the revenue, and I'm not so sure in the proper place that we shouldn't consider this.
Maybe the township knows. We can find out from them perhaps.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried. All right, then, the next one, crack ceiling project on page 47. Ron?
Yes, thank you. We've got two prices for the crack ceiling. Midwest Asphalt, who actually has done it the last two years in a row, they're at $1.40. And Camp Coop, who also provided services in town several years ago, is at $1.43. Estimated quantities is about 7,500 pounds. Total cost will be about $15,500. I guess a simple reason for a crack ceiling is prevent the water from penetrating down into the subsurface of the petuniums and prevent any freezing and thawing that can happen there. It's definitely worth its cost.
Ron, did you mean 10.5 instead of 15.5?
$10,500, yes. Did I say 15?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Can we budget it for this, Ron?
Correct.
With, I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Midwest Asphalt, $1.40 per pound.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Renkey to approve the quote from Midwest Asphalt at $1.40 per pound. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried. All right, then, the 2020 Steel Coat Project on page 50, and someone from the table over there?
Yes, I can start. Sure. 2020 Steel Coat Project, as you can see, all the streets are listed on page 53, and there's also a map close there. Cost estimate does include the Fox Seal seal coating, the granite chips that we have always used, and being it's, we're going to be covering the downtown, we do need to restripe the downtown again. And the engineering also will be in there. Estimated cost will be right around $200,000. With fuel prices where they're at, let's hope that we do get a budget for it. So it is budgeted through our Street Equipment Fund. So that's where the funds would come out of.
I'll make the motion to approve the seal coat plans and specs and authorize advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Renkey to approve the seal coat plans and specs and authorize our advertisement for bids. Discussion. Including the downtown, because we pushed that project back too. So that's a reminder for everybody that, for the size of this. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried. Okay, then I suggest that we do item C under Old Business, and then item E, and then Chuck can leave too. That should be all that's needed of, of him. So down to page 14 of our update, and no need Chuck for that, but, all right, let's see. We got the notice here from Jessica. And is she here?
She's on the call.
Okay.
I guess we're a pull-up. It could probably happen. Should have had her called a couple minutes ago. Pardon? Oh, okay.
Let's do the T-hanger project, as long as she'll, it'll take a couple minutes for her to get set up. So then, it's on page 87, so.
Sure, just to give a quick update on the airport T-hanger project. As council's aware, the footings and the slap for the hangar were put in last, at the end of last year. The build, the new building was currently delivered to the site, so the building is there, and they're going to plan to start construction here in the next week or so. In your packet is a, is a copy of pay request number two for the project, in the amount of $215,960.93.
Move to approve payment estimate number two, in the amount of $215,960.93 payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Paynesville.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by Gilmore to approve payment estimate number two, in the amount of $215,960.93 payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Paynesville. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried. I'll be looking forward to seeing that building going up soon near that. Okay, all right. Then, we are at item C under Old Business, and Jessica is now here to, we have some documents to take care of, and give us an update on what happened with the bond here.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Tonight, for your consideration, we have a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of $716,000 in general obligation taxable sewer revenue bond, Series 2020A. Mayor, you mentioned providing an update. So Bond Council, which is Mary Ippe with Wasburgs and Morgan, they've merged with TAF, now has at the beginning of the year. So she was asking some questions about how the bonds, or how the land, I should say, is going to be used. Obviously, it is for the sewer utility in its entirety, but TAF determined that because the land was going to be rented, and that the rental income would exceed 10% of the overall debt service payments, that the bonds would need to be issued as taxable. Being the rental income would be far more than what you would save by issuing tax exempt bonds, it makes sense to go ahead and issue these as taxable at this time. I know that the final lease for the rental of the land has not been determined at this time, but the savings that you would see on a tax exempt bond issue would likely be around $1,000 to $2,000 per year. So again, that rental income that you're going to receive off of that, renting out that land is going to far exceed what we would get from a tax exempt bond issuance. So we do have a term sheet for you that's in your council packet. I do hope that you'll be happy with the rate that we saw. We have seen a lot of volatility in the market, as I'm sure that you've heard in the past couple of weeks. So the rates that we did receive on this taxable deal, I know personally I'm very satisfied with. That said, the size of the bonds is $716,000. Because that power amount is under around $800,000, that's really where we start to see the need to go for a traditional bond sale, where you're issuing an official statement, you're going through that rating process, et cetera. That's really where we start to look at that. Being that this is under that, it seemed reasonable that we would look at doing a private placement for this issue. And with that, Northland was directed to reach out to the local banks here in town and solicit proposals from them, and see if they had any interest in purchasing these bonds directly. We did receive two proposals from the local banks. One bank decided not to submit a proposal. And the term sheet that you've got in your packet this evening is reflective of the proposal that was received from the bank that provided the lowest total cost of issuance for the city. So I'll just run through that term sheet really quickly. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have, so feel free to let me know as we go. So the issue that we're considering here is the taxable general obligation sewer revenue bond, Series 2020A, for the city. The term sheet provides a little bit of detail on the city. This is typically what we see in term sheets. The purchaser here is proposed to be Perennial Bank, so the bank just around the corner here. The issuer, of course, being the City of Paynesville. Northland acted as placement agent for this issue. TAF out of Minneapolis is, again, acting as Bond Council. Again, that name being somewhat new to the city, but TAF and Wasburgs and Morgan didn't merge as of the first of the year. The power amount and the purchase price is $716,000. The pricing date is March 13th, so that's when we received those proposals from the bank. The award meeting is the meeting that we're holding right now for your consideration of the resolution. The proposed dated and closing date will be April 9th of this year, so that's when bond proceeds would be available for the purchase of the land. The interest will be due semi-annually on June 15th and December 15th, beginning December 15th of this year. Two term bonds are proposed for this bond issue, so occurring in 2025 and 2030. That said, you will have annual, annual sinking fund payments throughout. So that first term of 2025, the interest rate there will be 1.85%. And on the 2030 term, you're seeing 2.25% there. And then just below that, you'll see those mandatory sinking fund payments in the principal amounts that are due each and every year. Those principal amounts combined with the interest on an annual basis result in a relatively level principal and interest payment due per year of right around $80,000. The bonds will be subject to prepayment in full or in part beginning December 15th of 2027, so that's your call date. So if you do have some additional funds and you want to pay those off early, you can certainly do that. The bonds were not rated. The bonds are being issued pursuant to Minnesota statutes, Chapter 444. That's the statute that governs your utility debt. And then 475, which is the General Borrowing Authority granted to cities here in Minnesota. Proceeds will be used, of course, to finance the purchase of land, and then also pay the costs associated with the issuance of bonds. The bonds will be considered general obligations of the city, and then the net revenues, of course, of the utility will be pledged to the payment as well. The bonds are not considered bank qualified, being that they are considered taxable. And also, given the size and the fact that they're considered taxable, the city will not enter into undertaking annual continuing disclosure information in respect to the bonds. And that'll save you a good amount of money. So the, sort of the low end of continuing disclosure starts at around $400,000, and it can get up there around $1,500 per year. Because you're placing these locally with the bank, you won't have to do continuing disclosure on these bonds. The bonds will be considered taxable. Couple of additional provisions there, that the bonds will be held by the purchaser. So Perennial Bank will hold these until maturity, or until the city decides to pay them off. If you do utilize that call date, bonds are going to be issued in $1,000 nominations. And then one type written bond per term bond maturity, so two bonds in total, the 2025 and the 2030, will be printed and delivered to the bank. And they will again hold those to maturity. And then finally there, you're seeing that the city will act as their own paying agent here. In traditional bond sales, Belinda, you know, you receive invoices from your paying agent twice a year. In this case, you're going to act as your own paying agent, being that the bank is right around the corner, you will pay them directly. This saves you around $450 a year. So some good savings there, too. With that, I am happy to take any questions that you may have. I do have the full cash flow with me, should you want me to hand that out. We are, of course, sensitive to passing documents back and forth that has been provided to staff, so they do have that, and certainly are able to email that out. But if you do want them, certainly happy to provide it.
Given the Fed cut rates two days after we got this back, is there, could we benefit by asking for another quote, or is it low enough already?
I don't believe that you would. In fact, when we heard about the Fed cutting rates, we actually saw interest rates go up in the municipal market. So what we had anticipated being helpful to a lot of municipal issuers, in fact, did not help at all. And we've seen those rates continue to climb over the past week and a half, just unprecedented volatility in the marketplace. So as I said at the beginning, I'm really happy with the rates that we've received back from the banks, from both banks that provided proposals. It just happened to be that Perennial provided the better interest rate for the city.
What's the closing date?
August 9th, or, sorry, April 9th.
April 9th, okay. So...
I don't know. We have a time scheduled to close with this, Amor?
We don't. I, I just want, you know, I...
That's what I meant, on the property.
Yeah. But I mean, I think our first dream is anytime before May 20th or something, so we have plenty of time. But anytime after April 9th, and between our agreed closing, we can, we can set it up. I know they were waiting to get some instructions from their, from their mortgage holder on, I don't know, it's, but there's some things that got to be worked out, but we'll, I've been communicating with the type of company, so we'll get it set up.
Okay. I was just concerned that if we were under timeframe for the, that closing, if we did do something else, how that would affect anything, so.
I'll just, I'll just tell them, anytime that we can get it set up, anytime after April 9th, we'll have the funds. So I don't want to do it the next day to rush things, but anytime reasonably close after that, we can do it.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-06, providing for the issuance and sale of $716,000 taxable general revenue, taxable general obligation sewer revenue bonds, Series 2020A, and pledging net revenues for the security and payment thereof, and the final bank term sheet.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau. And so eloquently stated, I won't repeat it, it is on the action sheet there. Discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, then, we can go back up to item L, disposal of excess property on page 55.
So I just note, this came to policies and procedures. We took a look at it, and the ordinance drafted that we got was a little bit different. And we just, we took a look at what the League of Minnesota Cities had offered, and said, let's revise it to match with their suggestion, and then advised passage after that.
Okay, so it's informational at this time, food for thought between now and three weeks from now. Okay, so then we will move on to item M. And we have some things before us there to discuss in regards to the coronavirus, COVID-19, whatever you want to call it. I mentioned, we have three weeks between now and our next meeting, so if there's anything now that we should take care of and discuss, put in place, would be an opportune time to do that. We have Emergency Services Director, Mr. Fred here. We also got an update from the Stearns County on what their, their health plan, what do you call it, I forget now, is. Mr. Tom found out that there was nothing in our EOP that dealt with the pandemic, nothing in center cares either, from what I understand. So we're just kind of learning as we go, correct?
Correct.
Got a couple of things, if we can bring them up. Tom, Fred, now you're at this part-time, correct?
Correct.
And this is kind of unprecedented, but anyway, and you're get paid less than your PD rate.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
So I'd like to make a motion to put Tom at full-time on the emergency manager, and put him at his PD rate, because this is adding so much workload compared to any other smaller thing. And the research is going to have to do to stay ahead of this.
I'll second that, but I have some questions.
Okay, then we can talk about it. So we have a motion by Gilmore, seconded by Renkey to, um, put Tom Fred as a full-time Emergency Services Director, and then we'll just leave it as that, correct, and discuss. Okay, questions?
Did your motion contemplate that this is temporary, just through the expiration of the emergency declaration?
That would be on it. Until, would be, within, not for forever. This is, we'll do this.
So the motion is that this is until the declaration that we passed earlier today expires, or is canceled, or set aside, whatever the terminology is?
I would go with that, yes.
That would make sense to me.
Yes, yes. So, and then, and then clarify that, sorry. No, I just wanted to make sure. Is there enough work to justify that?
During the coronavirus, I think it's going to be busy, especially if we have to come up with a plan for the health portion of it. Upon reviewing a lot of the plan, you know, it goes in here and it says, refer to the Stearns County plan. So I think there's some updates that we can do outside of the public health. I think the whole EOP has to go through an overhaul. I think the whole EOP has to go through an overhaul. So it might not have enough for just the coronavirus, but for eight hours a day, there's enough to be working on this whole block.
And then my other question is, if we do that, I understand there was, I don't know how much we can discuss, that there's medical leave. Is that going to affect any of that if this expires before? You can be back 100% with. Trying to protect privacy, but.
You, you can talk about whatever you want, you know, workforce count.
I would say it shouldn't affect it. So basically back to 40 hours a week, except for physical therapy. So I mean, to my understanding, it shouldn't affect it at all.
No, I don't, I would agree. I don't think it's going to affect it.
And he's currently working in, in, you know, in the office also, like, like duty.
The only thing it could affect is his ability to go back and train with K-9.
We could address this in three weeks at our next meeting also, correct?
When are you supposed to go back and start training with the K-9?
We are planning on March 30th, because I have a doctor's appointment on April 13th, the day tomorrow, I can come back to the road.
Okay, and April 13th is our next meeting?
So you would need to train before our next meeting?
That's what we're looking.
The goal is to send him back, because we don't know what's going to happen on the 13th. So if he's slated to come back to the road full-time on the 13th, based on our staffing, we would look to get him back on the road, which means we couldn't send him back down for training.
Right. The rest of the year, Tom, how much time would you say you spend working on emergency management stuff?
It varies.
Can you give me an average?
Honestly, I wouldn't be able to give you a real good average, because it seems like the last, you know, 2019 was, for me, a mess of a year. I mean, 12 weeks since I came into school, August 29th, I get injured and I've been, you know, I didn't really come back until, what was it, middle of January? So, you know, it, it varies. I mean, it depends on what's going on at the time. I wouldn't be able to give you a real accurate average of amount of time that I can spend working on this or that I spent working on this.
What, go ahead.
You were aware when you were hired, though, that the emergency management pay would be less than your full-time police pay?
Correct.
And you were also aware that sometimes emergency management may take more time than, that's, you know, when there's an emergency than it would maybe the rest of the year?
Yep.
Okay.
My whole thinking was that is on, there's so much information and non-information on this, the research on it, and what could be required of him to help out at the hospital, help out at the city is all one.
But it's all unknown right now.
It's what?
It's all unknown right now. Like, we don't know what the next five weeks are going to look like.
That's why I brought this up, because we don't know.
I, I think we can always go backwards if we need to. I don't see to reinvent the wheel. Plus, we aren't budgeted for anything additional. But we got to watch our budget closely. This isn't a pretty situation out there. We're, we're kind of a business like everybody else up and down the street. I think we have to tighten our belt just a hair or two.
I find it hard to, you know, I, I can agree with, with Lynn here. I, I find it hard to dump a whole bunch of unknowns in an unknown situation, increase responsibility, without also compensating them. Also, I understand that, you know, that, you know, there are budgetary type things. And we've had an Emergency Services Director for as long as I can, can remember at a decent rate. Now we're facing something that's totally known. It's, um, dealing with a, with a tornado or a flood or something. You know, you can kind of see an end date on it. You know, in a case like this, we've got so much that's unknown and dumping a lot on somebody.
I just kind of think, if you hire a person to do a job at a certain rate, then they agree to work for that rate, then that's what you proceed with. And if you want to maybe keep track of the hours that are put into the emergency management, and if it exceeds that, whatever 10, 1090 split or whatever we have agreed upon, then we can address paying extra beyond that. But I, I think to do it on the front end is kind of a, really a disservice to our hiring policy and our personnel policy.
I forget, when you were hired, were you hired as the Emergency Services Director also?
Correct. Replaced Brady.
Okay.
I think my preference on this would be to get rid of that, making it, making you a full-time Emergency Management Director, but leaving the police officer in there so that you can do the training. And if through some miracle this ends next week, then it's, it's over and you can go back to norm. But increasing the pay during that time, because this is an unknown, and it could be one of those situations where you can't do the police work at your normal rate of pay for, I mean, the governor said August. I don't think that, when you took the job, at least I wouldn't have anticipated an emergency that lasted five months. So I think it would be doing a disservice to ask you to take a pay cut for five months.
We don't know how much time is going to be invested over that five months. You know, if it's only, it ends up at three weeks from now that it's only a couple hours a week, maybe? Or, you know, like, it's just so unknown right now. That's all I'm saying.
What would be involved in, uh, from day-to-day keeping track of your hours or minutes or whatever done as one? Would that be feasible? I mean, you're.
I think you do that now, don't you?
You do now, but, but your, your work as the Emergency Services Director has changed within the past couple days. You're, you know, you've already spent a lot more time on it than typical.
Correct. Um, I mean, since Monday, I think is when it started. And Chief Wager can attest to this, that, you know, I come in the morning, I work two hours on PD stuff. And then I'm switching from the PD logging code or the punch-in code over to emergency management. So for the remainder of the shift while I'm working on stuff like this.
So is it feasible that, like, at our next council meeting, you could bring us a breakdown of how much time over the next three weeks, or including last week, four weeks, that you've spent doing emergency management stuff versus the police stuff?
Correct.
Yep.
So, so then pay would be calculated afterwards, after he's?
Right. Then we would be able to look at it and say, obviously, you know, we could figure out, yep, this percentage of his work week was much more than what we had agreed to. But because there's just so many unknowns right now, I, I feel like, in my mind at least, it just would make sense to look at it retroactively than doing it on the front end.
Deal?
Would we be doing the same thing if an emergency situation, tornado, major fire, earthquake, whatever happened? That's why we have an emergency director.
But it's not the same thing.
Well, it kind of is.
No, it isn't, because a tornado, you know what, what's going to happen, what's going to react, and so does everybody else. This is completely unprecedented. You don't know if he's going to have to go make sure everybody's keeping everything. If the governor brings something down and says he has to check and make sure everything's clean at places, you don't know if he has to get masks for everybody. Tornadoes are easy. This is not easy.
Well, I would, I wouldn't say that, I wouldn't say they're easy, but they're well-defined as far as what needs to be done.
There is a line, a plan behind a tornado, a plan behind a fire, a plan behind a derailment. There is no plan.
I don't know. I just read 54 pages of a plan before I came here.
Is it working?
I'm fine.
Well, then.
Sky hasn't fallen in my top section.
Yeah. I, I, I support what, what Lynn is, is doing, but I, you know, I would, you know, base it on, you know, like a, readdress it at our next council meeting, put something in effect so that, and then, you know, make it closed ended. So then, as I understand it, it would be a full-time Emergency Services Director until the next council meeting? Is that, was that, was that, I think, what we had come to?
I thought the motion was full-time Emergency Management Director until the expiration of the declaration.
Oh, okay.
That, yeah, we amended it together.
But I, I think after further discussion, I would support just increasing the pay until the expiration of that. Because something could happen before we reconvene.
So your motion would be leave him at the same pay rate as a PD regardless of what he's doing?
Yeah, if.
Until the end of the day.
If this motion were to fail, I would suggest bringing a new one that said, increasing the Emergency Management Director pay temporarily through the expiration of the emergency declaration to match the police officer pay.
Okay. That being said, I would vote against the, the motion as it is stated.
Yes, as it is now, I would vote against.
I would, okay. So I said we can vote on that? All in favor, I? All opposed, no?
No.
That fails.
Never voted on my own motion, no.
Yep.
Uh, then I would bring a motion to increase the Emergency Management Director's pay temporarily through the expiration of the emergency declaration passed earlier today to, to equal what Officer Fred is paid as a police officer.
I would second that.
So your motion is basically that regardless of what job he's doing, he's getting paid the police officer rate, right? So I understand.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes. You do.
Okay.
Do we have union implications on this, or how's that work?
I believe it would be handled the same way that the temporary city administrative position is handled, and they would just get a letter stating that this is a temporary situation. And I, I, that's without talking to, or that's my understanding of how it would probably work. Because it's a temporary situation.
Yes, my thought is, I hear the concern that this job was taken, knowing that this could be an eventuality. But I, I agree more with the fact that a fire or a tornado has a week, a two-week sort of timeframe. It's not months. And I think we're doing a disservice to ask for a pay cut for the next four or five months, when if this goes the way that Italy has gone, would be more than a full-time job.
I just still have a little bit of a problem, like, doing it on the front end when we don't actually know what the impact is going to be. That's, I guess, my hang-up with it. I guess I'd be more in favor of spending an amount of time, keeping track of that to see exactly what the impact has been and get a feel for what it's going to be in the future going forward, and then make this decision. When it's not something that we have obviously budgeted for, for this year. And we already have a pretty tight budget, like Neil said.
Wouldn't this be something similar to what we did for Ron and Belinda? We loaded their increases on the front end, not fully knowing what they would be doing?
We gave them new job positions. This isn't a new job position, this is something that he was hired to do.
His job is changing, because we did not have a pandemic plan in our EOP. That's something that's been added in there.
Yeah, but that's, that would be part of the emergency management, right? It would, it would include all the emergencies, whether we could foresee them or not.
No. Proceed, anything else? Proceed to vote, and the motion is to increase the Emergency Service Director pay rate to the rate of the police officer position that he has, or to his, whatever he's re, re, blah, blah, blah.
Whatever he's making as a police officer.
Whatever he's making as a police officer, temporarily through the expiration of the declaration, the state of emergency issued today. Discussion, any other further discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
I, I vote aye. Yes, that does carry. Anything else on the, the actual EOP there?
Not at this time. I mean, you were emailed out the Stearns County Plan, I think.
Yep.
We're going to have to work on getting our own pandemic plan. Like you said earlier, CentraCares doesn't even have one in there. I looked at Wake Hearts, they don't have one, Kimball does not have one, so this is something new to everyone.
Okay. Um, city employees, what are we doing there? Belinda, Ron, we have Bill, we've got Chief Department Heads here. You don't have any employees, so.
See, I have lots of employees.
You have, you have.
They're just all retired.
Yes. They're, they're, they're basically unaffected, other than you have things in, in place about entering and, you know, same with public works, about entering buildings, you know.
We do. So what we've gotten to with the police department is unless it's an absolute emergency, life-threatening situation, officers have been instructed to stay out of the Manor, 700 Stearns, and then Washburn Court, all the assisted living facilities. We are not responding, I shouldn't say we're not responding. We're responding to medicals in life and death situations, or ones that could be life and death situations. We'll hang in the area. I spoke with Steve Stang, and he knows if his guys need assistance, that we will be there to assist. But to limit the exposure to our population, we're, we're backing off on some of those things. And then my guys have been informed that if they do come into contact with somebody who's just ill in general, that they need to be making notes in our calls on the off-chance that they do end up being exposed while on the job, that we can kind of track where that is.
I guess on our end, yes, we will not be going into anybody's house unless they're somewhat demanding that we go in. Meeters will just have to wait for next round.
Liquor store?
We're not going to anybody's house either.
You're not going to anybody's house?
And Neil, you had asked earlier if we talked about curbside service. While sitting here, you know, we have a, a website that our association, everybody's asking questions, can we do, can we do? There are other cities that are checking into doing that. So, but right now, we did have staff that ever have to step down for medical reasons today. Other than that, everybody wants to keep going. We're, they, they feel, we're doing the right things.
Do you want to talk about your store hours?
You know, we're nine.
Head counts?
Nine to, you know, normally it's 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. We're seeing a drastic drop. Last week, like Thursday night, we had three people between 8:00 and 10:00. We're starting to see that closing of the gap between 8:00 and 10:00 PM. We have the tools to monitor that, that I might be looking to switch that if it's going to stay, because I could really use the help during the day. Because every time the governor talks, we get a flux of people, so.
So every day?
So every day. So today wasn't as bad. Today was very manageable, you know. Sunday was very manageable. Saturday was manageable. Friday was chaos. But, because we, you know, obviously we're geared for that, but we are now. So that might be something I would look into doing going forward just through the pandemic. And then go back, as, as we get built up towards summer, we have to watch those hours, but.
And you mentioned TOS?
TOS is closing at 8:00 PM as well. I would like to see what my competitors are doing, because that's always kind of our business, but three people, Saturday, Friday night was 16 between 8:00 and 10:00. So the majority of the business is from. So the majority of the business is from... 2:30. So, but I would like to keep monitoring it, and maybe...
In the interim, as far as, you know, this is all new to all of us operating under, you know, the emergency declaration. Would not take council approval if he wanted to cut his hours for, you know, health reasons, or if he monitored and made the decision, or?
I would suggest it, I mean, my sensibility would be that you authorize Bill to change his hours as business updates, and just leave it to his discretion. I think you can make a motion, I think you can trust Bill to make the decision that makes business sense, and I would, I think we should just do it now rather than waiting. If he, if Teal's going to close at eight, I got a feeling things are going to, you know, it's going to be a consistently slow thing. So I think you're going to find that to be true, but you might as well monitor it for a little while and see.
I'd like to run this, we can see.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to give Bill the go-ahead to manage his hours.
Second. Motion by Hertzberg, second by, was it Lynn, was it you? Second by Gilmore to authorize the liquor store manager to monitor the hours and adjust as he feels, is that basically it? Manage, manage the hours. Manage the hours. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carried? And I know we're in constant contact, and let us know what's going on.
City Hall, we are seeing an influx. It's more in the afternoon. There are approximately 150 DMVs across the state of Minnesota closed to the public other than doing dealer work. So I think the reason the afternoon is busier is because of travel time. We are getting calls from people in the cities that are driving up to us because we are one of the few open locations. Today, we had Wilmer DMV actually call us and said that they are telling people to come here. So did Litchfield DMV. They both told us that they are telling people to come here because they are closed, and they know we're still open.
What is your average transaction time?
If it's fast, yes, it takes 20 to 30 minutes to get a through a real ID versus an enhanced driver's license. Title transactions, you know, by the time they come in, we highlight everything, they sit down and come back, it's probably 10 minutes or more, depending on how long it takes them to fill it out. Tab, simple tab renewal, we can do it in a couple minutes.
But during all that time, you're handling paperwork back and forth with them, asking things?
Today, and I've really been watching this last week. Last week, I think the max we had in at any time besides the five staff members was eight in the entryway. We had over 10 today in the entryways. And then again, it's just, we had a family of four, we had a couple couples in.
I feel like we're encouraging people to be out and about by staying open.
I agree.
I know, we had the discussion today too, that, you know, if they're coming from farther away, that opens up the exposure from, especially from, you know, the metro area that has been having larger numbers of closures.
I like, I like keeping the status quo, the normalcy within the paintball area. It looks nice, the city hall's still open, it's maybe a calmer front, but we're starting to get more and more from all over the place.
I'm going to make a motion to close the DMV through the expiration of the emergency declaration, or otherwise decided by council.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rinky, second by Lebo to close motor vehicle through the end of the declaration or until further directed by council, is that correct? And we do a motion and a second. And question about posting it, can we close it immediately, or do we have to?
I'll have to give a notification, I have to email the state to tell them that we're closing it as of such and such time. They don't have to get back to me in a group, but they...
Okay, so we can say we're closed at effective now, and they would not have a problem, or?
I would do it tomorrow.
Do it tomorrow, okay.
Like, you'd be open tomorrow? Tomorrow would be the last day?
Be the last day.
Is that just DMV, or is that city and DMV? Or, and are you still, can we do dealers? Can the staff come in so they can still do dealer work, and we can potentially clean out offices?
Yeah, that's the only question, what are you going to do with the people?
I think that for now, there's plenty of stuff to be done with the people in, like, all this work.
Bill might need help with the liquor stores.
I was just going to say that, there's been other cities where city staff has come out, and, because I am very with trying to get this training done, but I don't really buy customers as well, so.
I, you know, I even volunteered to, you know, dress shelves or haul stuff from the...
Belinda was in there the other night.
Do carryouts to their cars, or whatever, so.
And we do, not curbsides, but we do go to some people's cars that want them in.
Can we just?
I'm sorry.
How many people are you going to make work for?
Well, I think initially, we can make work for all five of us.
How many people are you just going to make things up for you to do? Is it two people, three people? How many are not going to have a job?
Well, I think...
If you close on DMV, how many people will not have something to do?
Well, Belinda and Jody are strictly motor vehicle.
Okay, that's two.
But they also do dealer work, so if we allow the dealers to come in, that's a good portion of their job. Jody also does water bills entry, she files for Jen, she will mail things out for me. They could both help cleanly administrate her office and the other offices in the building that need to be gone through. They can all help with that.
So it's two?
Two, that's their main job.
That was my question.
Sorry, I wasn't quite following.
Was, was the intent of the motion to leave the, open for dealers, or just close totally?
Is there a way, I mean, how broad of a range of dealers are you, are you dealing with? I mean, are we talking about local car dealers, or are we talking to car dealers from all over the state, or what's, what's going on?
The dealers we're doing right now are local ones, and we go, we go to Richmond, we go, we've got some in the New London Spicer area.
Do they physically come in, or is that a...
They drop off and leave their stuff, and then come back and get it.
If it's a drop-off and leave, then the intent would be to allow you to continue to do that.
One thing I heard at 5:00, and I didn't get the date, was the governor did push this October enhanced license back. So this doesn't end in October like it was initially.
What the governor does isn't going to matter, it's got nothing to do with the governor.
No.
What the ruling is at this point, my understanding of it is, is that if your driver's license expires in March of 2020, you can potentially board a plane with an expired license for up to a year past expiration, or 60 days after the emergency, whichever is longer. So that only is affecting the people that's licensed expires this month. That may get drawn out longer, later, but that is it at this point. There's been talk about him doing tab renewals, extension on tab renewals, that does not happen yet.
What about putting down our tape and keeping people eight feet apart, and only letting one or two in the door at a time? And keeping our revenue source continuing? I think everybody's overreacting on everything, I'm sorry.
You know, the problem is, is they're still coming in the building and touching door handles and, and whatever, and hate for it, I can understand, you know, that the, the risk of exposure is, is still, still there.
We have been practicing for the last couple weeks, we are using hand sanitizer at the beginning and end of every customer transaction. We're wiping down counters, Ron's trying to help us with that. Public Works is cleaning bathrooms every day. We're doing door handles, we're doing tables, we're doing chairs, we're doing everything we possibly can. We've only got a couple pens out there now that don't have spoons on them, so there's no tape that germs could get in. We've got a diffuser going, thanks to Alicia. We're doing everything we can to keep it clean, I don't, I don't know if it's enough or not, I don't know. And I agree, I hate to lose that revenue coming in.
Well, like Leonard said, if this continues till August, or 19 months, whatever worst scenario is, there will be layoffs.
Right, this would have to be in contingency if it went on too long, that, that we're going to have to lay off.
Well, I think at, at some point, we would readdress, and, you know, that would probably be part of our emergency management plan, like how do we reopen our DMV in our city hall while taking the precautions?
I really hate to see.
I was down in the cities yesterday, and there was not a lot of people abiding by the, you know, don't go out and about.
No, they were, if I can talk, they were, a group of liquor store managers from up north said everybody was at their cabins. They all went up north this last weekend. So that's something we've been thinking about, as that inflects this craziness of the cities happens.
Yeah.
They're coming out here, so.
I don't know if we can, the lobby, who would stand in the door and monitor that? I've tried to figure out a way to do it, the ripe-up service.
Well, there you go, there's your new job, Neil. You couldn't come stand and do it once.
The side of the brain, and then find the little notes on the cars.
I don't, I just, I racked my brain trying to come up with a way to do it.
I was a bartender cop in 1976.
You know, and, and the dealers, the dealers that are under the, what, the 20-day requirement to...
10 days.
10 days.
10 days to transfer vehicles.
Transfer vehicles, so. And that hasn't been extended or dealt with either.
Not that I've heard of. And most deputies are still working and doing dealer work. The ones I have talked to, all of them are still taking in dealer work. Wake Park has got a drive-through service, so they're doing some tab renewals. I think we have to be careful if we talk about getting into like mailing them out, because we're not supposed to mail out, so I have not been given free rate to do that yet. On a normal day, we're not supposed to do any by mail.
The reason I brought the motion is, this is not the common cold, it's not the flu. This is a thousand times deadlier than the flu, and we have a particularly susceptible population, especially those who come into city hall rather than doing it electronically. When you have a disease that you can carry and pass to others for 14 days before getting sick, you can't adequately protect yourself by just not going somewhere only if you're feeling sick. I don't want to close it down either, I want the revenue as well, but I'd rather have a little bit of lost revenue and save lives.
Yeah, the, the issue is, you know, looking at New London who shut down because of, you know, suspected exposure, if you're looking at, you know, exposing our police department, Public Works, it couldn't get fairly serious. Anything else, are we ready to vote? The motion is to... Close the, for dealer transfers, correct? Until the declaration?
Until the expiration of the declaration or other action by the council.
Okay.
Because I think if we can flatten this curve, and it's good, and things start opening up in a couple weeks, then great. When we can start getting the hand sanitizers and things in stock again, but...
As a DMV is going to cover driver's license and DNR, so when you say DMV, that's motor vehicle driver's license DNR.
Yes.
But the city hall would still be open to the public to come in and pay water bills, get building permits.
We haven't talked about that yet.
Okay.
Hey, are you cleared?
Yes.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
When opposed, the motion does carry. Okay. Yeah, in regards to the, the other, you know, the building permits, you know, that's probably going to start picking up now, our, you know, I guess our, our marker, our exposure is a little bit less than people coming from Inupun County or Ramsey County, but what...
My biggest concern with the DMV is just that transaction period. You're sitting there for 10 to 30 minutes, dealing, passing things back and forth, that's a long time for somebody to cough or sneeze right on your counter, and then hope that that Clorox wipe gets it.
It's hard to imagine there's going to be a whole ton of building permits rolling in right now with all the uncertainty with jobs and...
That's true.
Ron got one earlier today.
They're just talking about, construction is going to be, it's probably an essential...
Yes, construction is considered essential.
Considered essential. If it's categorized that way, whether... Oh, we may not have to close it if people don't want to start building. You know, I, you know, I can understand, I don't want to be totally what alarmist or whatever, I can understand all the, you know, all the, you know, concerns, I'm going to try and, I'd like to try and maintain as much normalcy under the conditions as possible, but again, I have no idea what that normalcy would be under these conditions.
And I...
Sorry, Belinda, from my role, I know the court is canceling everything through the end of April, and not even rescheduling, just canceled. The Dakota County Courthouse shut down. You can't even go into a public courthouse unless you actively have a case. Completely closed to the public, which is just unprecedented, and I think toes the line of constitutional rights a little bit, and that's where we are. Shutting down motor vehicle to me is just a revenue thing, but there's an access to government piece that comes along with shutting down city hall. That's why I didn't want to lump them together.
And city hall can limit the one or two people that help them, or does everybody have to help them?
It's not as much back and forth as it is a motor vehicle. I don't know, Jen, I'm trying to grab my head around, if we close motor vehicle and city hall is still open, your door is still unlocked. I think you're still going to have, at least at the beginning, everybody's still coming in, wanting motor vehicle driver's license DNR, not understanding that we're open for one section, not the other. You put signs up, but...
Yeah, my thought would be we would pull the grates on both the motor vehicle and the camera side, the lights in the lobby would still probably be on, the doors would still be open, the motor vehicle, the, excuse me, the city hall corner would be available or open. My thought would be maybe use a sandwich board of some sort, or maybe the pulling-place board outside and say, motor vehicle driver's license DNR are closed, city hall is open for general city government business. But that city government business is slightly less traffic, except for, of course, in normal years, you know, March and April is busy, building permit month, getting ready for, you know, summer graduations, those types of things, and now water billing just went out. You know, they just read meters, so have a fair number of people for, you know, water billing. But we also have a drop-off box there, you know, so pay online there. This may push people to pay online. But the traffic for city hall this time of year is less than driver's license DNR and motor vehicle.
You already went through all the tabs for all the trailers and campers and motorcycles?
Those are all due in February, and then you have...
We got that one.
Yeah, and then they also have the quarters at one period of March, and that's done.
You're not going to get your fishing license?
Fishing licenses, you know, we can't actually get here, you have to go to Fleet or Hilltop with them. But still have ice in the lake, so the boats aren't a big push yet, and there's no snow, so there's no storm rush.
Hilltop no longer does so.
And you don't do fishing anymore?
No.
Oh, so just fleet then?
No.
That's good to know. Maybe we should reapply.
They demand us from another time, so.
I imagine we leave the city hall open until we find that there's too much traffic and/or too many people coming in throwing a fit. I'm worried about the people coming in and not looking at your sign and saying, my tab due.
There is that.
I was supposed to go in last week, but...
Well, we, yeah, we are getting that on the phone right now, a little bit, you know, we, our phone calls, I bet you have quadrupled, at minimum, and it's, are you open? We've been sent here, are you open? And our, our status quo answer is, we are open now, we have no idea if we'll be open this afternoon or even tomorrow. Well, aren't you going to be open? You know, and we're like, no, because the governor, the president, or our council could shut us down. They realize that, most people are very understanding.
Okay. So we're not going to have an issue?
I believe if we're here, people will walk in and they'll say, can't you just do my tax?
And, and I think it's simple enough that those grates are pulled, I think will get to hint.
Yes, in time.
Neil?
How about putting a sign on our doors locked? Sign is there, no motor vehicle. Other city business slash permits, whatnot, please call for appointment. And do it on that type basis. We're still here, we're still doing business, door is closed.
That's my thought as well, if we do it by appointment.
Well, there was some motor vehicles that were doing it by appointment, but now they have since closed.
have since closed. Um, there was some courthouses, I know Litchfield, they were, everything was closed, but it was by appointment only. Could you go there?
But I don't think it was, you weren't talking about DMV, you were just talking.
No, DMV is closed.
Is this like building permits or whatever?
Somebody wants to visit or need some info, you're only one person here, they make an appointment.
Sure.
And that'll eliminate the not-so-important.
Sure. And of course, it would eliminate some of the, maybe angry customers.
Well, they'll still be mad because they walk up to the door and they can't get in, so we're not really, we're not eliminating the problem.
Well, the door is.
Post a notice for City Hall and police.
But if the door is locked, we won't be, we won't, we won't be yelled at. They'll just see them walk away.
They'll get yelled at.
They may call, but that's.
That is an alternative also. Either way, we could post it on a, you know, Channel Eight, we could post it on our website, we could post it on Facebook. We have direct communications with some of our area DMVs, so we've been very transparent with them, so we would call them. People could still pay their, you know, bills because we have a drop box.
So I will make a motion, and it's going to be similar to the one like we did for Bill, to leave City Hall open to regular city business for now, but giving Ron and Belinda the authority to close City Hall, make it open to appointments only as necessary for the health and safety of everyone.
Motion by Rinky, seconded by Gilmore to close, no, leave City Hall open, but give Ron and Belinda the authority to monitor that and act accordingly in the interest of the health and welfare of everybody concerned, correct?
Yeah, and even if it's closed, I think it'd still be open to appointments so people can still do their business. We just ask them to make an appointment so that we're minimizing that contact.
I think we should maybe implement that right now and make, make the decision, appointments only.
I'd be okay with that, too.
Well, we have a motion that didn't get seconded, did it?
Yeah, it did.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah.
What was Neil's idea?
Make the decision right now to be open appointments only. Period.
Well, then to vote against the motion as it is. Motion is to leave it open, but leave the, the discretion up to Ron and Belinda as to shut it down for appointments only, correct?
One question, would you guys be okay with that, or do you want us to figure out if you want to make the decision for you?
I guess one question is, if we decide to close, how much notice do we need to give? I mean, we just, all of a sudden, 10 o'clock, we decide, okay, we're done for today, and close the door, or?
No, if, if.
Kind of a.
No, it, I, I'm thinking if it's a health issue, which is basically our concern, I don't know what New London or some of the others did. They, did they do it right away when they determined there was a potential exposure? I don't recall.
I heard about London in the morning.
Mm-hmm. I mean, I feel like by the time we get a potential exposure, it's kind of too late to be closing things.
Well.
You know, I mean, I kind of, I'm kind of with Neil, like, this can be our responsibility as a council. We can take the responsibility for this and just do it.
Correct.
And not put that responsibility on our interim administrators.
All right.
So we're going to vote that motion down and make a new one, or?
Okay, yeah. The motion is to leave it open for city business, but give the administrators the discretion to close, correct?
Yes.
Or appointment only. All in favor, aye? Oppose?
Nay.
Everybody says.
That's two tonight.
Okay, I'll make the motion then that we close City Hall and we put a sign on the door with the phone number and we take City Hall business by appointments only.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinky, to basically shut down City Hall except for appointments. Is that correct? Appointment only?
Yes.
And then we'll post accordingly on.
Effective again Wednesday?
I would say effective immediately.
Okay.
But, but we're not closing motor vehicle down until Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, we're leaving it open tomorrow. Is that what?
Yeah, because we have to notify.
I have to email the state, and I, I believe we have to at least give them notification before we shut it down. Expect that.
So we could shut at noon tomorrow?
We could shut at noon tomorrow.
I would say let's shut at noon tomorrow then.
Noon?
Because that will lessen the possibility that people will drive up from the cities to rush their tabs through.
mornings have been much wider than.
Yeah, okay.
Noon tomorrow, is that?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? All right?
I'd like to make a motion allowing any city employee to cross train in another department so that if there's a need, somebody can fill in who's already on the payroll.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rinky, seconded by LeBeau, to allow any city employee to cross train in any other, who's a department?
Department as permitted maybe by the department head. I know we might have some.
So you're talking about like, somebody who goes out to work in the liquor store or?
Yeah.
Somebody from City Hall?
I mean, I know we can't have Belinda going out and patrolling at night.
I was just going to talk about, because there's, there are certain requirements there that.
We were going to see if we could bring Neil back.
Yes.
I think he was part of.
Okay. Uh, motion by Rinky, seconded by LeBeau, to allow any city employee to cross train in other city departments subject to the approval of the department head. Is that correct?
Approval of, yeah, I mean, that's correct. That's what I said, but approval of department head or as permitted by certification.
Oh, as permitted by certification.
Yeah.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Um, so I feel like there are some things, though, that our city staff will be doing that aren't necessarily classified in a department, like cleaning out the administrator office and stuff, so. Can we, would it be fair to just say any city employee to fill a need as determined by city administrators?
Isn't that basically the intent of the motion?
That is the intent of the motion.
And, and knowing there are some restrictions about, um, you know, payroll would be one where you probably wouldn't want, you know, everybody cross train. Oh, I'd like to cross train to payroll, so I gotta find out what everybody makes or whatever, but, you know, so that would be up to the, up to the department head or administrator to handle that. Anything else?
Just a question. Don't, don't most job descriptions say something like they'll do whatever their supervisor tells them to do? I mean, I mean, I think, I think it's kind of.
Yeah, but their, their job titles would be somewhat descriptive, and we'd probably have to run that by the union too to let them know that, that's our intention temporarily.
The biggest one I can imagine happening is obey the girl's stop to help stack.
Yeah. Hey, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? Anything else from the boys?
Um, the only thing I have is regarding pay. I know we've got one employee that is unable to work now for a timeframe due to medical and it's due to coronavirus. I did see something come through the league.
Due to potential exposure and related health reasons, is that?
Yes.
Because that employee's been exposed or anything.
No, no exposure is a possibility.
Just to clear that up.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, the league sent out a thing that, um, there's a new federal law talking about FMLA being extended and/or emergency paid sick leave act mandating that employees, employers under 500 and government employers provide employees two weeks of paid sick leave at their full regular rate if unable to work, and if they're part-time, it would be appro rated based on their average hours. So this brings up, you know, this appears to me that it's supposed to go until, sometime honor for April 2nd and until December 31st. How do you want to handle pay of employees?
That also entails, there's a lot more of that to the bottom. It also entails if you cannot take your children to school, you have, or you have somebody sick at home you're taking care of, or you feel you're sick, you can take the two weeks.
Yep. If there's any reason based on coronavirus that you cannot leave to work, so I guess I need motion from the council. A, is this what you want to do, or do you want to go beyond that? The, the staff member we're looking at right now, I believe it will be through potentially April timeframe anyway. Or, you know, if we have other staff members, the same thing happens, do, do they have to take PTO to get paid if they don't have PTO, or are they unpaid and have to apply for unemployment, or is it?
Do we have, do we have a, a, do we have days of sick leave that employees are entitled to at?
PTO.
Just PTO?
PTO.
I know that, but I've seen some cities are, are requiring employees to take PTO, but they're allowing them to go to take negative paid time off so that they're not, not paying them, but they're using paid time off from future, from the future, basically. I mean, if they leave, what are you going to do about it?
Does this employee accrue PTO?
No. No.
That's the problem there.
No, part-time or sick.
Is there a PTO or?
No, I just, I just mentioned it that.
And there is a letter from ASME in here that also deals with the pay of employees, asking that the city continue to pay the employees.
In regular businesses, they take that two weeks off regardless. They have a case of PTO, then you get a tax credit. So I don't know how it works.
We don't get.
You'll be that cash credit.
That's good.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we, we read.
A suggestion would be to adopt the, the federal guidelines immediately, so then that would cover everybody, because this doesn't go into effect until April, correct?
It says honor before April 2nd.
Oh, honor before April 2nd.
So I don't know if, they just haven't decided exactly when it's going to affect, and this is for a two-week timeframe. So if an employee has to miss more than two weeks, would this continue on? Or would it be done at two weeks and then it's unpaid leave or PTO or unemployment?
Wherever it was two weeks.
That's how this is, but then I'm asking, does the council want to adopt more or stay back?
I think that would be another day-to-day or week-to-week type of situation.
This is something our feds are also working. This is part of the pay reach that they can't agree on. There could be reimbursement, you know, so far the pay reach hasn't passed.
Now, and that's an unknown as to if and when it will.
I will make the motion to. Secure everyone at two weeks of PTO or sick leave, depending on how they're classified. So that means if they have it now, okay. If they've taken some time, they'd be restored up to that two weeks that they can use for this COVID, and if they need additional time, they can accrue up to another 40 hours that they'd have to pay back through future accrual. And then we can revisit this at the April meeting once we see what the feds do.
So actually you're adopting the federal, but they can use an extra 40 hours that we could give them, but they got to pay back.
Okay.
But the first two weeks would be covered on this, right?
The first two weeks, so we'd essentially, everyone starts at 80 hours PTO tonight, wherever that, if they're at 60 right now, it goes to 80, so then they have it. They can use that for two weeks if they need an extra week because a family member, somebody got sick. They can do that, and that would be, have to be paid back like Bill was talking about. So we'd credit that in advance.
So you're saying you're going to give employees who maybe only have three days the same amount as you would give an employee that might have 10 days banked or nine days banked?
Yeah. Put everyone at 14.
I think we better check that federal law because I believe the way we read it is they get two weeks.
Yes, I agree.
If you had COVID, COVID symptoms, or you're, you follow those, all those guidelines, you get two weeks.
Yes.
I did not see anywhere it said whether you have PTO or anything else. It says they're giving you two weeks.
That's part-time and.
Yeah, part-time and their average hours, but this is, they would, the, the two weeks would be mandated.
Yes.
That does not affect their PTO.
Right, and I would be comfortable with that, and then, like Sean was saying, anytime beyond that would be borrowing PTO from the future.
I'm fine with that, yeah. We would adopt, we would adopt what is going to be what the, the, the plan is from the feds to do with the FMLA, correct?
FMLA and emergency paid sick leave out.
Didn't, didn't that pass? Wasn't that like?
Yes, this has passed.
And if they need it, they could use 40 hours of paid time and pay it back.
Yes.
So this money should be.
If they. I don't know that it's going to be a reimbursement that feds to the city.
Okay, so who knows?
No, it doesn't say that on here.
Because Bill one or two, that was part of that bill, that's passed. So that's something we need to research. I guess if they're telling us we need to pay, that's what we need to do.
I'd also like to clarify the motion should not mean that they have to be eligible for FMLA, because I'm just, I'm doing some quick research and it looks like even for this under the federal law, they still have to be eligible for FMLA, having worked here at least 12 months or whatever it is. So I'd say, no, we're just giving them two weeks, plus they can bank an extra one.
And there's two sections.
Yeah, I read two weeks. If they follow, they go through them guidelines, they can't go to Jamaica.
Yeah, yeah, it's staying home.
If they follow the COVID guidelines from the federal, they can have their two weeks paid sick time.
Yep.
And if they need an extra 40 hours, they can take that and pay it back.
Yeah.
Basically, if somebody had two weeks, they gave it four weeks off, they use their two weeks of PTO, and if they needed another week, they could get the 40 and pay that back. Right? Isn't that the scenario I'm working on?
Yeah, and then I think we can look at this again in April and see if we need to extend that further or consider just unlimited unpaid time off, whatever it is to me.
And for those part-time employees that don't earn PTO, they will get the two weeks and then they're done until the council takes further action.
It wasn't seconded yet.
I'll second it.
Motion is by Rinky, seconded by Gilmore, and do you have that, Jennifer?
Um, bear with me. Um, so if my, if my understanding is right, the council would give an employee under the guidelines of COVID-19, two weeks of PTO, paid time off. Once that is used, and they, and they need additional time, up to additional 40 hours could be paid or borrowed and paid back to the city.
I think the motion needs to be paid sick time, though, not PTO at the beginning, because that's what the federal law is, is paid sick time.
And you're going to have to track that if there's ever going to be a back to the week.
So, but, well, how would we do that if we don't get, we don't accrue six time, or we only accrue PTO?
Because of the federal law.
It's a federal premium.
Because you're not accruing it, we're just giving it.
Okay, so I will change the PTO to sick leave?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Yeah.
And then this will be revisited, um, excuse me, this would, um, all fall under the federal, um, guidelines and would be eligible for any employee, any employee, and then part-time employees?
Are prorated.
Are prorated.
For two weeks.
And I don't think they're getting the 40 hours, though.
They don't get PTO to be able to pay that?
No.
They, I mean, they would get paid for whatever they work in a 40-hour, or in a two-week period, right? So if they work 20 hours a week, they would get.
You know.
For the two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm following you. Sounds like a whole paragraph, but we're good. Sounds like a whole paragraph, but we're good.
Okay. Anything else? Wrong paper, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and?
Oh, I guess, is that retroactive? Like, would that include the person who didn't come to work today?
If it's effective today, we're okay.
Okay.
Okay. Then we're okay. Anything else with employees?
Renters with? In terms of closing, opening things, I mean, I guess it's not directly employees, but it, I mean, we do have some spaces that we rent for social gatherings. It seems like we should be talking about whether we're going to do that while this emergency order is in effect. That we're, I mean, we're trying to discourage gatherings of more than 10 people. If we're renting park places for gatherings, presumably they'd be for more than 10. I don't know that we should be doing that. And the other thing that crossed my mind, I don't know, Ron, I mean, I suppose we've got some city bathrooms. Are we keeping those open and running around cleaning those all the time, or?
Yes, they are open.
And maybe that's not a bad thing. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I just, it, I just mentioned, and I think there are things you should think about whether we want to do that. The rentals, seems like at least while this is in place, that that would be contrary to the governor's direction. I just, I don't see how you could justify doing a rental during this time.
City hall's not going to be open for people to come in and make that rental anyway.
But they could call. I don't know, some could be booked. I'm just, I'm just raising the question, I have no idea.
Yeah, that'd be the gazebo and?
Um, we have a lot booked for graduations.
Like, May, June?
May, because our parks aren't open until mid-May. So we pretty much have from the 15th of May until the 15th of June, every Friday, Saturday, Sunday, booked, double booked, triple booked.
Oh, hopefully it comes under 10 people, then they're.
Maybe we don't need to worry about it right now. But sometime between now and when those rentals come up, we're going to have to make a decision. And I think it would, we should let people know that if the governor's order is in effect, that we can't have gatherings, you know, I mean, we're not going to be able to allow the rental. I, I feel like we need to give them notice.
Then, then my question is, like the gazebo, are we going to be sending our officers down there to keep people out of the gazebo at gazebo park?
Parks have not been ordered closed.
But, but people can rent the gazebo, correct?
Well, I think what Bill's saying is we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow people to rent it.
So we can just free, you know, if they want to have a graduation.
First come, first served.
Graduation party that they could.
Can we put this on agenda for April 13th?
Yep, but we should be thinking about.
Well.
It gives us a month.
I, I'm, just as a parent of a junior, and a, a parent of a friend of a lot of seniors, I would want to know this immediately if we were not going to be able to rent the gazebo so that other venues would be opened up.
But.
I think we'll see a lot of them canceling anyway because.
You won't have any.
Sure.
But no, like, have you not your own home?
That'd be illegal.
I, I just, I think, because as people start making their invitations, they're making them now with that on there. Um, I think.
Yeah, I think that might be.
I'd hate to cancel it, then it would also. I don't know.
I would hate to tell everybody that they can still hold it there. They order 250-some invitations, and then we tell them April 13th or April 30th that we're not going to allow you to be there.
So could we maybe plan on addressing this at our April 13th meeting?
Well, I think that's how I'll be everywhere, because I have people who are canceling weddings right now.
So maybe we just need to let them know that this, maybe they need to, maybe already start making.
That it's a possibility, depending on the way things go in the next month.
I'm sure Riall puts something together great when he calls them.
I'm not sure if the directive so far addresses, I know it mentions clubs and restaurants, bars and that, but I don't, you know, and golf courses. It mentions country clubs and clubs. You know, I don't know if it mentions.
Well, I don't know.
It has language to say in other places of public accommodation, but, I mean, it doesn't, you know, it's like, I, I'm not sure, you know, it, it's, it's not super specific. I, I'm just concerned about the general flavor of the governor's order, isn't it? We don't want to have gatherings of.
We're going to shut down the DMV because we're going to hate people, but if you want to rent the park up and have 120 rock on it, I'll do it well.
I mean, it just, it, it seems contrary to the spirit of it. It's not, it doesn't specifically say.
But we also don't know how long these things are going to go on. Like, the governor's order may not still apply on May 15th.
Or, or it may be a full quarantine.
Yeah, I mean, the order, the order, I, I don't even know if it had an ending date to it. That's a good question.
I guess my concern is if somebody rents a park, are we really here to judge what they're doing it for? I mean, theoretically, they're doing it for a legal purpose. And if the governor says you can't be doing that, well, then we should be assuming that they're not going to bring more than 10 people to that space. They're following. I agree, but if I want to rent the gazebo and have a solo poetry slam, I could. It would be the worst idea anyone's ever had, but I'd do it.
I'd be there.
Well, you know, could we suspend taking reservations?
Well, I don't know, I don't, I think we could suspend future reservations. I'm just worried about all the reservations on the books.
Yep. Could we send a notice out that in lieu of COVID-19, we're not sure if these facilities are going to be available? Because that's exactly what it is.
Yes, yes, we can, with Ron's direct number on it.
Mm-hmm. Well, we don't know, nobody knows.
We don't, we don't know, you know, and I would hate to cancel them all now.
I would too, because those people are, are renting it for a reason because they don't have maybe their own facility to have it at. Their own garage or their own barn or something.
I, I get the point about still taking reservations for that, but basically shutting everything else down, that's.
So.
I kind of, I'm kind of on the, like, let's notify the people that have reservations, either by phone or send them a mailing, and just let them know that at this point it's a bit up in the air and we don't know if those facilities will be available to be opened.
Put our numbers on them if you want.
Yeah?
Yeah, put Sean.
Who's idea was?
Well, and that is something that, that would be a good, so there's another, you know, we could prostrate them to, to help with the flutters and making those, we'll call them those contacts. So we can, we can do that.
Okay.
What about future reservations?
Well, we would take whatever direction we give us if you want to help them now, suspend them. But we are taking reservations for 2021 and 2022 already, so.
I think I would maybe just take the reservations, but when you're taking them, let them know. Things are kind of up in the air and we don't know.
Okay, so continue to take future, but give them the same schedule?
I mean, if we're pretty well booked from May to June anyway, like, you're not going to be booking, you're going to be booking out in July and August and beyond.
We are, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm, okay. Well, we're going to take a break from this here. We're kind of reinventing city government here. Trying to deal with openings, closings, what's, what we can do, what we can't do and all that. So we need a distraction. Sorry for making you wait this long. Okay. Um, we are at Old Business, I think, a city administrator position, selection of finalists, and we have a few things to discuss here. And I think we've got, from Liza, a couple of options that we can look at first before we get into the nitty-gritty here. Option one is to continue as planned, which would extend our meeting here tonight even longer. Put a temporary hold on this and consider the candidates at a future date if they still are interested, correct? And the third option is to start all over again, correct? All right, your thoughts, everybody? Does anything you want to add to that?
Uh, no, just, you know, anecdotally, I was in a community last week. Fortunately, like I mentioned in my email to you as the city council, they were able to find their fit. But, I mean, each day before final interviews was, should we do it, should we not? I was in constant communication with the finalists as well as the city council just to see where everybody's comfort level was. So that schedule really changed a lot and still, even just the night before, it was, should we still move forward with it? So it was a lot of tension even the day of the interviews. And I know one finalist in particular, she was fine with coming, couldn't wait for the interview process. And then the night before, she said, I don't know if I should go. I'm getting a lot of pressure from my city council. Which the city council of this community was very accommodating and, you know, they felt for those candidates and didn't really enjoy the thought of making them leave their community. But it's just a changing situation. I mean, by the time we have our interviews on our original scheduled dates, things will calm down. But I think that's just my word of caution is that, you know, this will be an ever-changing and I'm here to work with you. So whatever you decide to do, we'll get through it.
If we would do option two, with people, what is your best guess on how long we could wait? I know that's a little question.
Right.
But there's also that limit of too long. I mean, 60 days would be a long time, 100 days, they're going to all be gone. You might as well start grandling, right?
Exactly. I would think so too. As far as how long we could go, you know, I don't know. Because I'm sure these candidates probably have a lot on their plate right now. So maybe they won't mind a little break so they can concentrate on what's going on in their community. But we don't know how long this is going to go. So do we reevaluate again in two weeks, four weeks, six weeks?
Right, because I seen one, this last hour, maybe in the, in the February, he's here. So I mean, he's looking hard, so he probably won't be here on that basis. You can, but I don't know. Is, the other thing I have is, do we want somebody that's willing to leave their community in time like this?
I, well, yeah, in a lot of those lines, like, I really feel like it's important that we have input from our staff and our stakeholders in the community. And, you know, I mean, like, I'm kind of, I would lean maybe towards option number two or even three just because I would really hate to proceed as planned and then have to curtail our, those things, the public meetings.
I think if we do two, we can't go longer than 60 days. I don't, I don't think that's fair to anybody. And I don't think we're, the pool that we have right now is going to drop a long ways if we go longer than that. I wouldn't think.
I mean, if we narrowed it down to like our top four or five today and then you notified them that we were pushing it out and just got their feedback if they.
I could definitely do that, you bet.
What are you thinking?
We have a few good candidates that I'd like to hear from, and I'd hate to lose them.
Part of me thinks we should probably still narrow it down to three, just deal with those three instead of keeping 10 on the hook.
Well, that's what we're, that's what we're going to do, is narrow it down to the final finalists. You know, on, on, on one hand, you know, we shut down motor vehicle and we're looking for things for people to do. We could have, then we go and hire one more person right away and, you know, have people still looking for more to do. But, you know, I, I am in the, you know, inclined to go with option one and continue on. I wouldn't necessarily appreciate kicking this can down the road any much longer. Like Sean said, we have some pretty good candidates in there, I think. And, you know, you take the chance of losing those or picking up some other decent, you know, other ones too. But, you know, looking at, you know, the, the point about are they willing to leave a community that, you know, under circumstances, that some loyalty, but not everybody on that list is like a city administrator or whatever, so.
Well, true, then it's going to be a long game.
I guess that would be up to them if they wanted to leave their, they, they are seeking employment anyway, so.
I don't know that there's anybody in the list who, if they worked for us, I would feel shafted by them leaving for a city administrator position. I think that would make perfect sense if they were to do that in a time like this. I think we need to move forward as planned.
I do too.
I mean, can we move forward as planned with the option of reevaluating in the beginning of April? You know, like, if the governor does put shelter-in-place orders, then, then we maybe bump it out 30 days for them to come up and do their interviews, something like that.
Of course, once the, once the finalists are named, that becomes public information.
Then you got to react.
Mm-hmm.
What, what would the reasons be to not move forward? The one was the meeting with the city leaders or, because that would be a.
Gathering.
Gathering of more than 10 people.
Potentially.
Is there a reason other than that?
Well, I mean, again, it's like, we just closed City Hall and DMV because we don't want people from other communities coming in here and potentially sharing germs and putting people at risk. So that would be another reason to consider at least.
But some of the public, um, we can have the shareholders pay as well. Then you just have, split them up and have just two people go with them, sort of group go with them. It's all the shareholders involved.
Your thoughts?
Um, I know we were talking about, I think, potentially doing a bus, correct? So, yeah, we really need to, I think we'd have to check into the guidelines for that. I thought there was guidelines about having tight quarters for over 10 minutes. And so we might want to take a look at that. Another way that we could get around that, this is what we talked about in the community from last week, is providing a tour, a guide, if you will. And then they were able to conduct their own tours, which I know is not nearly as much fun. But yes, you are potentially eliminating the portion for a public meet and greet and then obviously bringing those stakeholders in. You'd have to do a lot of adjusting for that, so.
And then, I, I mean, is our hotel considered an essential business? Or if those are non-essential businesses are shut down, will there even be a place for the people out of town to stay while they're here?
And then also do the finalists feel comfortable staying in a hotel?
Right.
If we did a tour, we could almost make a virtual tour. Sort of, so if you went down in the industrial, you call up whatever, you meet you outside and tell you a little bit, then you could drive around and maybe stop at the credit union and talk to somebody a little bit, outside, just driving by yourself.
Just take your smartphone and you can be our virtual tour.
Follow Leonard, I'll just have locations and.
I think there are a lot of ways we can do this through the use of technology and other ways and being flexible with understanding, even if somebody just doesn't feel comfortable with coming and still working with that while still moving forward at the same time.
And the other community, they felt a public meet and greet was very important to them as well and how they got around it is they recorded 10-minute kind of introductory videos, posted on their website, and then invited public feedback. And we didn't get very much public feedback, but at least it made the council comfortable in that they invited feedback and the information was out there on their website. So even after the decision made, some members of the public can still go and take a look at who the finalists were. So you're right, we did get creative and there's ways of moving forward.
Nope, Sky is falling.
I'm still interested in moving forward with option one.
I'd make the motion to move forward with option one, knowing that we have to be flexible along the way. along the way.
Does that flexibility include bumping our, potentially bumping our interview date out a little ways?
It may have to.
Okay, then I'll second that.
I'll second it so we can discuss it. Okay. Did you get your question answered?
Yeah, and then I seconded it.
Surprise.
Any other discussion? So the motion is to proceed with option one with the understanding that we will have to be flexible and, you know, use whatever means we can to accomplish this, we have the technology.
Yes.
Any, any other discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None?
I agree.
All right.
Wonderful, well, here's the fun part then.
Yep.
All right, so as you know, each of the council members, you received an email last week with information regarding ten semifinalists, you started with twenty-three applicants, we whittled that down to eleven semifinalists, one did withdraw simply by just not performing the duties that were requested of them. So tonight, you will whittle it down to whatever number you feel comfortable with, they usually recommend four to six because by the time we make it to interview day, there's one or two that may potentially withdraw particularly probably even during this time. So just a word of caution, we do not wanna identify any of the semifinalists tonight, they were each assigned a number, but we just wanna make sure we don't identify the communities that they may currently be working in or any other identifying characteristics that may give away their identity. Typically, I would hand out a ballot, but in order to keep my germs to myself, I will just walk you through this process. Usually I use a ballot in selecting finalists so that everybody can come to this with, you know, their own ideas and there isn't any swinging back and forth or any movement on your decision. But I did give you a worksheet and I asked you to select your top two to three and if you feel comfortable, we can just go right down the line and you can tell me who your top three are by number, I'll record that and then we can talk about, you know, which makes sense or who may, what number makes sense to move forward in inviting for your interviews. So Mayor, I'm not sure, do you wanna, do you want to take or do you...
Oh, we'll start down on the left.
Okay, sounds good.
Way down here?
Yep, you're up Neil.
And you want them in order one, two, three?
No, just your top three and...
Oh, no special.
By number, yep.
I had number two, number three, and number six.
Okay, I have two, three, and six.
I had number nine, number two, and number four.
Nine, two, and four.
I had three, six, and seven.
Three, six, seven.
I had two, seven, and ten.
Two, seven, and ten.
Ten, one, and three.
I said them backwards, so...
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Ten, one.
Doesn't matter, okay, nope.
All right, ten, one, and three. All right, so just to, everybody can follow along, I have one vote for candidate number one, three votes for candidate number two, three votes for candidate number three, one vote for candidate number four, two votes for candidate number six, two votes for candidate number seven, one vote for candidate number nine, and two votes for candidate number ten. So we do have two top vote catchers, vote candidates number two and three, followed by candidate six, seven, and ten with two votes each. So right there, you have five candidates that have the highest number of votes, does that make sense to you as a council in order to invite that many to your interview days or do you want to enter into some discussion to either include more or whittle it down?
You, you lost me over the ones with two, I know it was ten.
Yep, ten, seven, and six have two votes each.
Thank you.
Six, seven, ten, two and three have three.
After eight o'clock, I kinda lose track.
There's a potential with five to that one, we could lose one or two out of there depending on, I would, I would be comfortable with five, I don't know what the rest...
I would too.
Would...
But five to interview?
Mm-hmm. Five to ask to interview.
And we're staying on the same timetable as originally?
Yep.
Yes, with, obviously I'll notify the candidates that things may change as we continue to progress and obviously they'll be in constant communication with staff and you as council.
Okay, what do you need from us then? Do you need a, a motion to that effect then?
Yes, why don't we just walk through, I wanted to make sure there was a consensus, I wasn't sure if I heard everybody was on board with the five, so.
I'll, I'll make the motion to continue the process and interview candidates number two, three, ten, seven, and six.
I was just going to do that because nobody else did, but we do have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, to proceed with option one and extend interview request to candidates two, three, six, seven, and ten.
Wonderful.
Okay.
All right, and I can produce a press release tomorrow and release it to staff so that the information will be public. I will notify all the semifinals tonight what the decision is so everybody will know where they sit in the process. Next part of the discussion was to talk about interview day, obviously the last time I was here, we kind of walked through a loose guideline of what we would like those interview days to look like and so staff worked with me to kind of finalize that. You have a copy of that schedule within your packet. Just, I guess, was looking for feedback, but granted, I also know that this could change.
Staying on the same schedule correctly?
Yep, for April.
Yep, we have interviews set, scheduled for April twenty-first and twenty-second and part of that reason being is we had a community engagement meeting scheduled for April twenty-first that we thought would be a great opportunity to invite your finalists to. We also had a community meet and greet scheduled just shortly before that meeting and then other activities scheduled for that day is a group tour, a leadership staff luncheon, and then an opportunity for the EDAT board to meet. EDAT board would ideally meet with the candidates on the twenty-first if we do end up with four finalists, however, I do recommend if all five decide that they are able to participate that we move that side, that portion to April twenty-second and then we can piggyback the council interviews with the EDAT board, everybody can kind of flip-flop rooms. Otherwise, we're looking into schedule crunch if we try and do it on the twenty-first. We have interviews scheduled from one to two-thirty, ending in time for the community meet and greet at three. So we can continue to massage that, but those were the scheduling, potential schedule conflicts if we have more than four candidates that day.
The, the twenty-first, you said, what was this, the time?
Yep, so twenty-first, there's a community tour at ten-thirty, our group tour at ten-thirty to eleven-forty, then from eleven-forty-five to twelve, twelve-forty-five, we have a leadership staff luncheon, and then from one to three, a potentially good time slot to have panel interviews with your EDAT board, and then from three to five, engage our community in a meet and greet where I will obtain feedback from those attending, and then we have a community engagement meeting from five to six where candidates just simply are invited to observe.
Because of twenty-second, we have some...
The twenty-second, then that's where, where you really come into play, I need you there because that's gonna be your final interviews, you'll sit with forty-five minutes with each of the candidates in a panel interview and you'll also enter into your deliberation and discussion that day and make your selection.
So these two dates are okay?
These two dates were agreed, would have worked when we met the last time.
And with our declaration of emergency, this is still okay to do?
Well, that's when we were just discussing options and decided to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, with the flexibility.
We may need a bigger room.
Potentially.
We may have to have it outside.
Yep.
Go down to the trans...
Well, there, there are different rooms.
Groups of classes.
Like the area center or whatever.
If they're open.
Yep.
Probably be arranged.
So I know it's hard to discuss it when we don't know what our future looks like, so I propose we just continue to move with this and then even just as early as next week, reevaluate at that time and in the meantime, I can share this with the candidates and we'll stay in constant communication.
Did you get my new email? I have a new one.
Yeah, I believe so. Yes, I sent you an email last Friday, the entire council an email last Friday.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
And I put your new one in there. Okay, so with interview day, the, just kind of up in the air, the next discussion, item for discussion is whether the council feels it's appropriate to provide a travel reimbursement for your candidates and that can take shape, well, first of all, the question is yes or no, and if it's yes, then you can take a look at any number of items, whether it's a mileage reimbursement or provide a stay in your hotel. You do provide a lunch on April twenty-first, so you're providing one meal, so those are just some ideas. So first of all, as a council, I think you just need to decide whether you feel it's appropriate to offer reimbursement.
We typically have not done that. It's been a while since we've been administrator, things may have changed tradition or what's expected. Do a lot ask about it or expect it? I suppose it depends on the distance.
Yes, exactly. It really just depends on each community, the fact that you have a two-day process, you know, if somebody is traveling from far, it could be difficult for them to make the commute back and forth each day. So most cities do offer it, again, it's what a city feels comfortable with offering and yes, I've known a candidate or two that just said, you know, "I simply can't, I can't foot the bill and will not, you'll have to pull me from consideration," so.
I think we, I recall we may have offered moving expense, but I don't, don't recall. But that would depend, you know, that would come as part of the negotiation.
Exactly, yep.
I mean, I feel like if we're planning a two-day process, we should at least consider something, hotel, the cost of the hotel or something.
And that can be something where the city makes the arrangement and the city is directly billed, so you have some control over it and, you know, the location and some hotels provide a continental breakfast so then that meal is taken care of.
Jeff, did we actually vote on the last motion to proceed?
No.
Okay, I just don't want anybody to forget about that before we get too far down the line. I don't have that we voted.
Yep, we're still in the discussion phase.
Okay.
What was that motion?
Oh, yeah.
Five candidates.
Yeah, to continue with the process, so...
Option, option one and five, I suppose we should vote on that if we're gonna start looking at some of the other stuff.
That's kind of my thought.
Yeah, you're right, as usual.
No, not my thought.
Okay, we, we do have the motion to proceed with option one and to extend the interview request to five, those five individuals. Discussion, all in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None? I carried, okay. Do you, I suppose you need to know before you let them know that we would offer some type of option for that, so.
I guess I'll make a motion then to extend the option of the city will pay for a night in the hotel here in town, the night of April twenty-first, to our five candidates.
Second.
Okay, motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie to offer the hotel room overnight at the city's expense for that. Two-day period, discussion? One night for the two days, any discussion? All in favor, I?
I.
Oppose? None? I carried?
Well, those are the only business items I have. I will give press release to staff tomorrow, which will reveal the, the names and the education and background of each of your five finalists and then obviously communicate with each of the semifinals tonight, the decision of the council, and then stay in very close contact with staff regarding April twenty-first and twenty-second.
So you contact them and if they say they're no longer interested, their name is not released, correct?
It is still released, it was...
It is still released, okay.
Yep, once you've made your selection, it is public information. Okay, wonderful, thanks for working with me and...
Thank you very much. You know, that was a nice break from dealing with the COVID-19 issues.
Can we take a bathroom break?
Pardon?
Can we take a bathroom break?
Yeah, you can take a bathroom break, but only, only Alicia. Maintain your social distance. A little recess for a short time there.
We know what's on fire.
Traps did stick around.
Uh, it's some over by Rice Lake, I think.
That's a fire one, I can leave.
No, no, that's, that's fine, I, I gave you the option, I'm not gonna give it to you more than once.
I don't think I either.
Okay.
What's on fire, Paul?
Some over by Rice Lake, it sounds like.
Fish house.
Couldn't get it off. Frozen in so bad.
Just so you guys know, there's a, just a newsroom in his work, says that Trump's signal of desire to ease across virus restrictions, says that we have to get things, or we have to do things to get our country open.
Well.
I don't know what that means.
Was that, was that a tweet or was that...
I have no idea.
That's the same guy who said we'd go from fifteen cases to zero in less than a week, so.
I'm just simply reading what it says.
I'll start believing what he says when the infectious disease doctor standing behind him doesn't go like this because of what he's saying.
No, I mean, it seems like they're gonna have to do something, I was just, but I don't think they've done it, you know, and I don't, I don't really, I mean, maybe he can just do it by edict, I don't know, all these things he comes up with, but then so many of, it sounds like it's a done deal, but then it's like, oh yeah, Congress has got to approve it. Oh, yeah, yeah, there's nothing happened there so far.
You know, if we go to a virtual, Lisa could be sitting down having a sandwich right now.
So CDC said that the...
Yes, or...
How many? Seventeen days.
Most passes, like, seventeen days in the...
All of a sudden, the camera goes off.
Oh, my God, what? Yeah.
Oh, it's too much, it's like...
I mean, I, I think, you know, you just, I mean...
Me, you'd see me, you know, the sandwich right now.
What you said, I mean, you almost do curbs, like...
Get the bush light out of the way.
But, but right now, you just, it seems like you're, you're in a situation where you don't have the, probably the technology ability to let somebody order something online. No, I mean, you know, I, I get that, but, but if you, you know, I think places that probably do deliveries, they have to do that.
We're down to that.
They have to get the payment in the store before they can deliver. So you have to have the ability to order online and pay.
Honestly, they're weak. I mean, they're.
No, I mean, that's, yeah.
You wanna know where all the PR work went? They're literally everywhere.
Well, but none of those people have credit cards anyways.
You can't blame them.
Much later.
I don't know. You can't, you know, like you said.
Must be a left.
You know, are you gonna go hang in, you know?
Only we can.
I think that's a good-sized display.
It's not, only we can put those in our.
When I walked in, it was kind of, whoa. It was surprising.
Because you don't wash your hands, so how many times have you been in a walnut restroom or something? Got some. It's like, you know, there are things and soap and other stuff here, you know, or any, any place.
Yeah.
A lot of it comes down to that.
Okay.
Very much so.
Research?
The one we discussed was, yeah, you were right.
No, it's spread by, is there travel?
No, you said the one was a really good speaker? Right?
You get to point for me.
A couple of them, no, a couple of them, yeah.
It was pretty refreshing after.
A couple of them, I feel like that.
But it is, it's interesting to hear if they're saying.
Well, see, you know, I mean, people often are different on paper than they are in person.
Here's a Morgan.
I mean, that's kind of been.
Okay, we're all back, we'll take a worry list off and I think we're done with employees and on to renters within the city. And I think that may have been resolved with the governor's release today having to do with, they can't evict anybody, because we've had at least one phone call about someone that was kind of aside herself about not being able to make her rental payments, so there's really nothing we could do, refer her to United Way or a couple of different things, but now the governor says.
Who's gonna force that?
Well, the court's not open to evict anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't go to court.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to spend any time on that, there's not much that we can do anyway. Utility billing, that's something we can do, something on.
And we're in the process right now, we just read meters, so I'm getting bills ready to go out, so approximately April first, the bills will be mailed out and they will be due May first, so Lakey would take effect potentially May second.
Do we need to put a notice on the bill or is this something we can talk about at the April thirteenth meeting and just let everybody know?
I think with our social media and such, we can let people know that way.
Okay.
You don't, you don't want to put a notice just saying if you aren't able to.
Most of them are printed.
Okay, so you can, all right.
Okay. And okay, so we can think about that, see what transgresses over the next.
Yeah, so we have time.
Three weeks. EDA loan payments?
That one, I would like it if we could say if it was requested, we could freeze them and not pay interest on them if your goals, I don't know if they, as long as the declaration goes, I don't know if it went three months, if you'd have to redo the loan papers.
Well, if we did.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure I follow your motion, is your motion just that you're gonna on a request basis stop the accrual of interest?
So they want to make payments or pay interest if it was requested? But if this goes on for three months for this declaration, the emergency declaration, does that mean what they, who's doing on the back of their payments, you know, are managing correct?
If, if they, if they skip payments without us doing anything, they would go on their default.
They would go on their default.
Yep.
It, it just seems like a funny way to do business to only do it if it's requested. I mean, it seems like if you're gonna do something with EDA loans, you would just do something with EDA loans. I mean, it seems odd to penalize somebody for not asking. But, you know, people can always pay if they want to pay, but if you're gonna say we're just gonna freeze interest, I mean, why would you not do it for everybody if you're gonna do it for somebody? I, I don't understand the thinking.
I was more worried about the payments than the interest on some of the, if somebody was in trouble with it, they could not make a payment or.
Well, I don't think that's the point that's being argued, the, the point was to make it optional or on request.
Yeah.
Just to, just to say a blanket, you know, for example, that as of today, no more accruals accrues until the council acts and payments are not expected or due until council determines.
And then if they made payments, they would just all go on principal, I guess, you know, I mean, if somebody, if somebody chose to continue to make payments, they would get applied to principal if you did it that way. But, I mean, I guess you can do whatever you want, but it seems like an odd scenario to just say, well, we're gonna do it if they request it, but we're. If, if you knew, if you knew that you could request it, why wouldn't you?
Yeah. Yeah.
I think part of this depends on our politicians, what they give these small businesses.
Right, yeah.
You know, there's all kinds of promises out there, nobody knows where or how, but.
It's all loans for small businesses.
I did have one call in case anybody was questioning it.
And of the ten loans, I believe there's three of the businesses that are shut down currently.
Currently shut down, yep.
And maybe we should just, businesses that are shut down, a business that's thriving, there is no reason to forgive.
That's just what we said, that.
Yeah. Are, okay, are you gonna name the three other, sort of the, the thriving businesses? I, I'm not sure if we want to discriminate based on, like Bill said, if they want to pay, they can and.
Well, they might, they might be partially shut down, but still doing something and, you know, what, what, you know, I mean.
You know, there's such a big difference in the EDA loans, how much some are paying compared to all others are paying, that's what I was saying. But maybe if we did do a freeze on it, across the board, they can still pay. But if it lasted three months, we gotta redo the loans, is what I'm saying, because instead of being a hundred and twenty months, it would be a hundred and twenty-three months now from the day they started.
I mean, I, I suppose, you know, we, we could, I, I don't think we have to rewrite them, I mean, we're, we're kind of modifying the term of them by just saying that we're, we're gonna stop the accrual of interest based on the emergency and if you can make payments, they're gonna apply to principal, if you don't make payments, they're gonna get added to the end of the loan.
It's just like a lot of work to redo all of those loans.
It would be.
It would be, yep.
You know? Yep. I don't mind doing the work, but.
Court's closed, no.
I was thinking if we're gonna look at the EDA, the EDA payments, which we should, then I'd want to look at the water bills for the residents as well. And we should do both of them at the same time.
But we have time on the utili, well.
Arguably, we'd have time on the EDP stuff as well then, but.
Well, then we'd have, I suppose you could just start your, backdate your accrual date for any interest, correct?
Because the EDP loans are, they're all due all different times.
Yes, they are.
Right.
Yes, they're all over the board.
Well, it's, it's different from the water bill, I guess, in the sense that, you know, the EDP is a loan that businesses have taken out, whereas the water bill is something that's mandatory that people have in their home, you know? Like if you don't have water in your home, it's uninhabitable.
So what are you saying?
Well, I'm saying that there's a difference, like I, I don't necessarily feel like because we're gonna look at EDP loans, we also have to look at water bills, that's what I'm saying. I mean, I feel like we can justifiably look at EDP loans because we're tacking those bills on to the end of their loan agreement or those payments on.
Has the, has the state, I'm going backwards on water bills here, but has the state done anything? I, I thought I remembered that, that we had, that the governor had said we can't shut off water. Is that, maybe, maybe that didn't happen, I thought it did.
I think that's in one of his latest ones, where you can't shut utilities.
I'd have to look, I'd have to look, but I.
I think I heard something.
I thought the governor already covered that, I mean, to me, the water bill thing is, I, if, if, if it is correct that the governor did that, I think you just send out your water bills, but we just know that we, you know, if people don't pay, we can't shut them off, but we're, we would hope that people would. But I, I, I think the governor already took that action, that we're not gonna shut off.
Shut off is a different timeframe than late fees, though.
I think, I think it was all utilities.
And then early May, we could always make a motion for late fees if we wanted to.
I would think so.
I would prefer it, I'll just make the motion to extend the due date on water bills to June first and waive any late fees as long as it's paid by then, and to suspend all shut offs during the period of emergency.
Now, if we do that, will they get, when's the bills go out? Every three, four, I don't.
Every three months, so the next bill after this one will go out July first.
So if we tell June, they're gonna get a bill in June and July?
They're still gonna get the bill now, it'll still go out.
Oh, yeah, gotcha, yeah, all right.
But it's just that the deadline to pay would be extended thirty days.
Okay, I was like, gotcha.
And I realized that it's already printed, so we would just have to post it on our social media or if somebody calls, we could tell them. But my motion was considering just extending that thirty days, so instead of May one, shut off, then June one.
And then a late fee on June second if they don't pay by then?
Yeah.
And if you give them that thirty-day window or more than that. I'd second that one.
See if I get this right here, I'm motioning by Rinky, seconded by Gilmore to extend the due date for utility, or our water and sewer bills by thirty days, is that?
To June first, whatever, thirty, thirty-one.
To June first. And it'll be a late fee then if not paid June second.
Yeah.
Discussion?
And then it also included a suspension of shut offs during the period of emergency.
And no shut offs.
And I'm pretty sure that all utilities are no shut offs, I believe I read that.
It could be, I'm looking at the executive orders, I don't see it, obviously, in the discussion.
I know that, I think already by law, they can't be shut off during winter months or at least heat.
Water can be.
Water can be, but, yeah, okay.
Unless it's our main heat source, and then they have to provide a lot of documentation to get it out.
Oh, okay. Anything else? All favor I?
I.
Oppose? None? I carried? And, okay.
Then I will move to suspend interest accrual on EDP loans during the period of emergency and suspend default during that time with the understanding that any missed payments would be added on to the back of the loan.
Is there a time period on this?
My motion was through the end of the emergency, but I'd be open to sixty or ninety days, whatever it need be. Ninety days might make more sense in case it's over tomorrow, but it's gonna take somebody a few weeks to get back up and running.
Well, there will be some cash flow issues for some of these people.
I think.
I'll, I'll just make it ninety days.
Ninety days. The motion by Rinky, right?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded by nobody?
I got a loan.
Oh, you got a loan, oh, okay. Okay.
Can you repeat the motion, real quick?
My motion would be to suspend all interest on EDP loans for a period of ninety days and also suspend any default proceeding during those same ninety days with the understanding that if a payment is missed, it would be added on to the back of the loan.
Interest accrual, correct?
Interest accrual, yes.
I will second that.
Okay, motion by Rinky, seconded by LeBeau, and did you get that, Jennifer? Okay, any discussion? All favor I?
I.
Oppose? One abstention, duly noted. Hey, anything else on EDA, utilities, city board meetings, continued meeting, I know our meeting is not for three weeks, a lot can happen in between.
You sound like this?
Yeah. This is getting to be like a policy and procedure meeting here.
We do have board meetings next week.
That's what I was just gonna bring up, that we have some board meetings that are coming up.
And the month of April is extremely, extremely busy.
And we will talk about the board of review and equalization too here later, so. But as far as city board meetings?
Bill, can the committees meet by video conference?
If they meet here?
Yes, any, any board that is subject to the open meeting law has the same rights as the council.
You drafted that resolution, right?
I did.
Yep.
But I guess my question is, so under open meeting, if we do video conference, you can only do three of them a year and somebody has to be here? Do we know if that applies to committees as well?
That's not, I mean, that's not true, your declaration has to say that because of the emergency, it's not appropriate for somebody to be required to be here, but if you make that finding, then you don't have to have somebody here. Now, it may be mechanically that we still have to have somebody, somebody here, but it wouldn't necessarily have to be a board member. Because as my understanding, the technology would probably require some staff member to come in here and set up the equipment, but ordinarily, it's required that at least one member of the board be present, but you can waive that requirement. And I think my resolution proposes to do that.
Knowing what we have for policies, I'd rather keep that on and get it done.
And what are the, what are the four? I know it's.
We have a special library board Monday, we have policies and procedures on Tuesday, we have.
I know one was park.
Park and tree on Thursday and environmental.
Okay.
The park and tree, we could almost meet anywhere if we needed to.
Well, you'd have to post where it is.
I mean, we could meet here like this, couldn't we?
Yeah.
Could we?
You could.
Just keep our six feet?
But then should, somehow should we deem what board meetings are needed?
I mean, I kind of feel like we just, if we have a setup like this and then give people the option to conference in by phone or video if they're not comfortable coming here or they don't want to be exposed or.
Until using the little room issue, well, that's what I was gonna say, use this room instead of the conference room.
And they're not using this for testing, so we can leave this set up the way it is?
I think committees should continue if possible.
Well, the, the suspension is only through the end of the month. Right? For testing?
Yes, at this point, I.
Yeah, so it's only this week.
Oh, okay.
But if we've closed the DMV, there wouldn't be testing, correct?
They still could.
The state, they would, they would still conduct tests like it's doing at Wilmer's right now. Wilmer's DMV is closed, but they're still conducting tests on the testing station.
Would these be on Thursday?
Thursday?
Yep.
Well, they would probably need to. Well, they would probably need to separate out their testing anyway.
A lot of staff looking for things to do, so rearranging the room.
They're going through a lot of blue tape.
Well, Lisa, for the park and tree committee, we can meet on the, uh, better part of.
There's no heat out there. I mean, it's still March, you know?
And in the past, it's kind of been up to the chairs, too, to cancel if they feel that there's no business, you know? Is there a lot of business on those meetings, or?
Well, April's so busy because of your quarterly meeting for those boards that have quarterly meetings. You know, the library, they're meeting, you know, two or three times a month. You've got council twice, you've got policies and procedures, they've been meeting three, four times a month. You've got your special little working session in there, your Board of Appeal, which is coming up. April is extremely busy. The other thing is, even though that we give people the alternative to call in, we still have the, do we have a quorum? We still have that trouble. We go through all the effort and time to grow the agenda, we don't have a quorum.
If we give people that option, like, can we just say, you need to let us know by whatever, the week before the meeting, if you'll be calling in or conferencing in?
Well, right now, every agenda says that you can't make it, you need to call the person on it. But as Belinda and I and Ron know, that doesn't always happen. But you can certainly say that the conference call was an alternative during the COVID-19, and you'll need to make arrangements. If you wish to stay at home and calling, you'll need to call, get the number and the passcode.
Just my opinion, but in the sense of some type of normalcy to continue to let the boards meet however they can under the restrictions of the open meeting law.
And then continue to open this up as our meeting place, and be the.
I mean, I'd be okay with that.
You know, another one that doesn't always means public safety, but assuming public safety probably will be now. There's a lot of stuff going on. Safety doesn't usually mean, but that might be meaning now, too, since things are going on, so.
We have to make a request for a resolution.
We have to adopt that resolution 2020-09 if we, well, I shouldn't say if, but we should.
Update?
Yep.
The other thing, I sent to Jennifer a notice. I mean, I think that if some, if meetings are going to be conducted and people are, and members of the board are going to be appearing by phone, you are supposed to give notice that some or all of the members may be appearing by phone. So you're just supposed to do the best you can to post and notify the press if that's going to be happening, so. I think, did you get that from me?
I did, and my thought was on that, is the notice would be the preceding page to the agenda cover sheet, or it would be a part of that agenda cover sheet. It just, it'd have a notice right on it, so that any and all meetings would have the capability of conference calling in, and that would be their notice. Because the agenda's cover sheets, not only is the whole agenda on the website, they're emailed to all the committee members, but the agenda cover sheet is also posted.
So you would just have a standard notice that would say some or all members of the board, or the council may appear by phone. Makes sense.
For everyone else to remember, and council to going forward.
Yep.
It would just be a part of the agenda cover sheet, or the sheet before the agenda cover sheet.
Very good. That makes sense.
We can't just make a blanket notification in the paper, but.
Do we have the capability of allowing people, like, allowing the public to call in as well?
We do. I talked to Stephanie today with Mayor Thompson, and if people would have come tonight, of course, we had our chairs six feet apart. But if they did feel comfortable tonight, they could call, but we had to do some of this housekeeping things first. So the next meeting, they will be notified that if you wish to address the council, we'd ask that you still want to be on the agenda, you still do your something in writing, but then they could conference, we could give them the passcode and the number, and they could be via telephone when that item came up. As well as if somebody here got for a bit of sick or something, that can't come, you could still be teleconferenced.
Well, I'll move to allow the city board meetings to continue by teleconference or electronic means or in person, unless otherwise canceled by the chair of the committee.
Do you want to agree with that resolution?
Well, that would be, that would deal with the.
Oh, the first one.
Yep, the first one there of continuing the meetings or not.
I'll second.
Was that a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I was.
Sorry.
Lost in the. Motion by Randy, seconded by LeBeau, and did you get that?
Uh, yeah, so that all city board meetings will continue as scheduled via either teleconference or in person, unless otherwise canceled by the chairperson.
Okay, clear on that? Any discussion? All favor, aye? I oppose, none, that carried. And the resolution 2020-09?
I move to approve resolution 2020-09, providing for meetings by telephone or other electronic means.
Second.
Motion by Randy, seconded by LeBeau, to approve resolution 2020-09, providing for meetings by telephone or other electronic means. Discussion? All favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried.
What about spring cleanups?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now.
Four.
Yep, I was taking care of the city board meetings at first.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, you know, the city event spring cleanup, household hazardous waste, the hold or not. Ron has been in contact with.
Surratt County has, or contacted them today, and all indications are they will be here.
Okay.
They felt they have enough space between them all, and it's outside, unless they get the orders from, you know, between now and then. Right now, the plan is it will happen.
So, and the thought was people would just drive up? They wouldn't even have to get out of their vehicle or whatever, we would have enough?
Majority of them like that, or even like that last year.
Yeah, okay.
They just stayed in the car, and they had enough workers out there to move their items out.
And they've already wearing gloves and all that stuff? Okay.
So you recommend continuing?
At this point, yes, I mean.
Okay. Good.
What is the date on that again?
April 25th.
Okay.
Obviously, it's subject to change.
Yeah. They're kind of, okay. We talked also about the Water Festival?
Water Festival, it will likely not happen, but at this point, we'll see what happens with the school. It's really in their hands.
Yeah. Anything else anybody can think of with what's coming up?
Do we want to schedule standing meetings on Mondays that can be canceled if nothing comes up? But at least then they're noticed, and we can be here if we need to?
We have other meetings on Mondays.
Well.
I mean, the library board's meeting on alternate Mondays.
Or are you thinking sometime during the day, Sean?
It could be during the day, too, I mean.
Then we potentially would have to have, it's still set up for electronic and. Now, the code is the same from meeting to meeting, correct? Or is it?
I believe it's A code.
A code, so that doesn't have to change each time, like?
My understanding is one telephone number with one code.
Okay, regardless of how many meetings we would have to use that.
If Chris is listening, maybe she could clarify that if she comes in.
That's my experience, is how they typically work, is it's one code for all meetings.
One code? One code, one phone number.
Okay.
Any amount we want?
And any amount of people can call in? Any amount?
Could we just do that Mondays at 11:45, then? Did that work for everybody today?
Nobody shows up, we don't meet?
Can we just put that as part of our emergency management plan?
Yeah.
I think you still have to post those as special meetings. Yeah, but you can do it, you can do it, but there's still going to be special meetings.
And then we have to say something that we need on.
I'm dealing things that we need to.
Publish an agenda.
If you did that, that's not a problem, except that what would you put on there as your item of discussion?
We would need a COVID-19 update, an emergency management.
COVID-19 update?
Yeah.
I mean, my thought was just if we're going to have to push out, say, for example, the interviewing deadlines, rather than waiting until the week before, it'd be nice to get in and do that sooner if we could.
You could always add an action item.
Yeah.
But you got to have something to put out.
Yeah, and then, yeah. So every Monday at 11:45?
Through the duration of the emergency.
Do you want on the Mondays, so you still have a council meeting at 6?
Maybe just between now and the next council?
Yeah, the next two Mondays.
Yeah.
Maybe just look out for the next two Mondays, so we can reevaluate on the 13th?
Yeah.
At 11:45 every Monday?
Does that work for you?
Kind of cuts into my dinner.
So that is going to be then, um, March 30th and April 6th.
6th. Great.
11:45 for a COVID and EMS update.
Okay, we'll just call those meetings and post them accordingly, with that as the agenda item. Okay, then, anything else on the COVID-19? Okay, if not, what do we have left here? Uh, special city council working session. Those dates. For me only, the April 30th and May 7th work.
I can't do any of the May dates.
Is that something we want to put off until if a new administrator is named? Or do we want to march forward? Just throwing out questions.
Right now, the only thing on the agenda is the MediaCom contract, right?
That's all I've been given, and that came out of policies and procedures. So, no, we do not have to have one. We usually have one the night of our community working session, which is the 21st, but we did not schedule one for after the community working session at 6. If you want, that would be your time to meet.
Mm-hmm.
But I think that day might be fairly full already. You're probably, will be here fairly early a day, and be already here till 6. So we did not schedule one for that night. That typically is your night to meet for them. Meet with the community leaders, township, school, and hospital. We meet with them for an hour, and then we go into your own special working session.
I think, personally, I feel like we could hold off till after we have the new administrator, because we already have a special meeting the next day to deliberate after the interview.
Absolutely, no.
How pressing is the MediaCom?
We have it here.
Okay.
Is that something we could discuss at a council meeting?
Absolutely, it just came out of policies and procedures that they thought that would be a good discussion point for a working session, and we usually try to meet quarterly. So it was time to put it on the agenda, so that's what I did. But absolutely, we could, once we get a new administrator in place, maybe that a working session with a new administrator would be appropriate.
What do we have as a projected start date? Is sometime in May, isn't it, the end of May?
End of May, I would think, first part of June, depending on.
They were taking like a 30-day notice.
Yeah, okay.
So maybe we would do it till maybe mid-June, after 21st and 30th, maybe?
Okay.
What?
After 21st.
No, like, I'll be gone for a while in June and July, so.
But then we can just set based on your calendar or something.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll look at dates later on, then. Okay, item N, Board of Appeal and Equalization, which is scheduled for April 16th. Up in the air. We were talking about how to do that electronically, which could be interesting, to say the least.
So typically, some years we've had no people show up, and other years we've had a whole room full. In the past, we've encouraged people through notice to make an appointment. And we've also encouraged people to meet with the assessor prior to coming here. If we do not hold one, and we call it an open book, we are going to lose our current board level for two years, 2020 and 21. So Jeff and I were discussing about if we kept our local board, we would highly encourage people to gather their information and present it to the assessor, you know, at an appointment. Have the assessor come out, have all that flow and memory stuff done. If they still could not come to a conclusion, come to the Board of Appeal and Equalization. But we'd have to make appointments. They'd be set to 6:15, you know, 6:20, whatever it is. They would, you know, they'd have to have their stuff presented to us prior, so we can look through it. They'd have less time in the room, we'd be spread out, probably like this. Of course, then we'd still need one person that is certified, and I believe we have Jeff, it'll be Sean and Sean. So we should be good? So I guess the biggest thing is, is do you want to give it up? And if you do, you're going to give it up for two years. And then we just need to answer the five questions that are at the bottom of page four of your update.
I guess I'm in favor of continuing it in this spread out nature. Answering the questions, and my motion will be to continue to have the meeting as scheduled.
I'll second.
And we can work with John and Randy on just our feelings here, so that they're aware, so they can expect appointments, people contacting them directly. They can also go through me and I, and give them their contact information if you desire to keep them.
And the motion is to hold the Board of Appeal and Equalization meeting. Any other discussion? Would we still allow someone to come in? Or would they have to meet electronically also?
Um, well, I think we could allow them.
To come in and personally present, because, you know, we had the one gentleman that had, you know, all kinds of documentation that.
I could double check with how Randy and Mr. Springer wants to do that, how they feel most comfortable. But I think our encouragement would be to have your, set up an individual appointment with the assessor prior to the board, so that both sides have heard of that. And then if nothing else, if they don't want to come, the assessor could present it. Or they could be conference called in. Or we would have to have maybe a door person, where we would allow one person in at a time or two, and then maybe call people from their cars, which isn't the worst.
You could encourage people, I don't know, I don't know that you can force them to do it, but you could encourage people to scan their documentation, so that you can have it electronically at your meeting. I mean, not everybody's going to have the ability to do that, but I know you're trying to avoid handling other people's paperwork to the extent you can. I think you could ask people to do it if they have the ability.
Or I suppose they, right here.
Oh, we don't have to handle it, you know, they can show, typically, they're showing it to the assessor. And then, of course, they always have the ability to go to the appeal. And then, of course, they always have the ability to go to the appeal.
Please do.
Right. Okay, any other? Yeah, the motion is to continue with the Board of Appeal and Equalization, any chance that they would, uh, make us cancel?
Well, that was a chance. I'll sign that tomorrow when I call.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I propose, none? Okay, uh, ordinance amended the chapter two, council procedure, also agenda procedures on page 61, this is coming through, um, policy and procedures, and Mr. Rinkie said, volunteered to give us a verbal report.
Did I? I think Jennifer voluntold.
Okay.
But I will.
You've been voluntold.
No, this is something that policies and procedures discussed, it came before the council about a month and a half ago, um, and I had said at that time that Jennifer looked at it and expressed just some concern for how things worked for her, so I discussed it with her, we met, um, discussed these things, and she thought that it would work, so we passed it and recommended that the council adopt it.
Ensure that things get in on time, so they can get in on the agenda, cut down on the number of...
Yeah, so the biggest changes were, um, so that it's the, not only do the, the city partners or the department heads, council members, um, city staff, but the public has a deadline to get things to, onto the council agenda, and also to submit it in writing like we're requesting now, because this is the formality to say, your request has to be in writing to be appeared on the, you know, the city council agenda. Um, we had in here to have a form provided on the website, and we took that out because now they're actually typing them, and if we provide them a form, we're thinking they're going to write them, and to try to transcribe written is not as easy as if we get a typed form. Um, the other thing would be, is if a department head and or city council member wants something on the agenda, it can, it gets to be put on, unless it's pulled for some, uh, there's a reason in here, uh, but it's supposed to be put on. Did I, did I miss anything?
No, I mean, really, the intent is to just clarify how, I mean, if a council member wants something to be discussed, we can get it on the agenda, um, if, and then, not only does it provide a procedure for how the public does it with the timeline, but it sort of serves as a way of making sure the public knows that they can, that there is a way of approaching the council and discussing concerns with us, so...
Um, but just a little, like, on your first page here, under the procedure at regular meetings, you've taken the council activity report out of there, was that intentional? Or was that just a oversight?
What, what's taken out?
The council activity reports. Do I think we usually do them right after the Pledge of Allegiance?
Which one?
Well, so it's not even listed.
Yeah.
So we could add that in right after the Pledge of Allegiance, um, or even after the open office, you could put council activity reports and then department head reports. The other thing that we did change was the frequency of the department head reports, that was the other thing that we changed.
Yeah, did you intentionally take out the council activity reports? I'm just, that was kind of my question.
I actually didn't do this, so I'd have to defer to Sean.
I'm trying to, I'm looking through it here, I drafted this quite a while ago, um, no, I did not.
So we can add it, just council activity report slash department head reports?
Yeah.
They kind of happen at the same time?
Okay.
And of course, this is only for informational tonight, they'll get drafted formally into the, uh, the format that we need to submit to the beauty code with, and it will be posted and then, um, presented at your next meeting for formal.
Oh, line 19 on that same page here, I know, I found, uh, it should be in coordination with other staff as necessary, correct?
Yes, it should.
Yep. I knew there was something in there that was just a typo. Hey, anything else in there? Okay, if not, that will be on our next agenda, this thing here, that, item D, hiring of full-time police officers, page 86. Chief?
Thank you. So we have run through the hiring process of, uh, remember when it was, February? No, we did four interviews, uh, with policies and procedures, out of that, three applicants came out, um, as possible candidates, one of those ended up washing in the background process, um, the other two have completed the background, psychological, physical, um, and at this point are able to, uh, be appointed to position a police officer. Out of that meeting, we ranked, uh, we had a ranking for each of them, Alton Haig would have come out as our number one, and then Dallin O'Brien, the number two, uh, after the background psych and physical process. So I'd be asking that the council make a motion to approve the hiring of both of them. By all indications, um, Alton, who goes by AJ, would be available to start on the 30th of this month, um, and I believe that, uh, it's entirely possible Dallin would also. I'm trying with some different ideas, especially with the current circumstances, and with COVID-19, of potentially bringing them both in, in the month of April, doing a lot of the office stuff with them at the same time, uh, and kind of cutting down on some of our training time with them, and then in May, um, go to the road, you know, still doing some road stuff in April, you know, when our calls and stuff like that come up, but then, uh, uh, switching over to night shifts and doing a lot of road work, then in May, uh, passing them off, passing AJ off as a second car then for the third phase in June, and I'd switch over to Dallin, um, and then basically, if it all works out right, in theory, we should be back up to full staff by early August.
When was Dallin going to start?
Ideally, it'd be nice to start him at the same time as AJ, because then I can run through a lot of the computer stuff, and rather than seeming like a broken record with them, uh, I can do it all at once.
I move to hire Alton Haig or AJ and Dallin O'Brien for the full-time police officer positions at a grade nine step one.
Motion by Ricky, seconded by Gilmore, to hire Alton Haig and Dallin O'Brien for the full-time police officer positions at grade nine step one, discussion?
I'll just say that after interviewing these gentlemen, policies and managers, was pretty excited about the caliber of applicants that we had for these, so, uh, we're hopeful that these will be good additions to the City of Paintsville.
All right, anything else?
Are, are these both, uh, fresh out of the academy, or?
They are.
They haven't had experience?
Dallin's got a little bit of experience working for KMI County Jail, um, which does give him a little bit of, of stuff, but nothing.
Um, Ron's asked that the effective of the motion just be clarified to say, I guess, whenever they're available to start.
Okay, one available to start with that motion. Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I propose, none? Informational, we have a lot there, we have the West Central Sanitation Report as typical, we have the letter in regards to, uh, Kristen Leiter or her work during the, uh, election here, April, May meeting scheduled, Liquor Star Report, Fire Department Report, the FCC, uh, notice on page 108, MediaCom, everybody's getting into how to fight the spread of coronavirus, but, uh, you know, everybody's an expert. Um, February Police Reports, the Great River Regional Library Report, and the Sauk River Watershed District Contact Information on 120. And that is it for regular business, we will, uh, recess for a short while here, we'll be going into full session to conduct a performance evaluation on the police chief under Minnesota statute 13D, point 05 subdivision 3A, we'll ask our city attorney to stay, and our administrators, and that's it, we'll take another little minute. How do you rate there?